Could we have a roll call?
Liz, roll.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Pumba. Member Clerk Raymond. Member Cavino. Member Esteho. Member Gaffney. Member Rappaport. Present.
Okay, all right. This is Barbara once again. The Town of Burlington will be holding the February 4th, 2021 as the virtual electronic meeting due to the current state of emergency due to the COVID-19 virus. As such, the governor issued an executive order on March 12th, 2020, authorizing remote meetings under General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20.
The meeting is held via Cisco Webex and is accessible as follows. The Webex link is townofberlinet.com. The meeting number is 179-764-0993, meeting password 1645. You can join by phone, 617-315-0704. You can also get this link on the town calendar off our agenda. The meeting is also broadcast on Bcat, Comcast 99, RCN 15, Verizon 41, and streamed on Facebook Live via the Bcat Government Facebook page. Public will be able to comment during the hearing during the time for public comment. The chair will ask for comment at that time. Questions can be asked via Webex, phone, Facebook Live, Webex Chat, and email at planning@berlinet.org. All persons wishing to ask a question or make a comment must identify themselves. If you have any questions regarding participation during the meeting, please call Planning Staff, 781-270-1645, or email us at planning@berlinet.org. All votes will be taken by a roll call vote, and we ask that anyone not speaking mute themselves so we can hear everyone. We are, I was gonna kick it off with introducing our new inspector of buildings. Mark Dupell is on. If not, we can move into continuances. Mark, are you on yet? I don't see him quite yet. We'll move on and go in. If he's on by announcements, we'll catch him then.
Thank you.
So there we go. Thanks.
Since that is the case, I am looking for a motion regarding items 7O through 7S.
Shomo Paul.
And that is a motion to take them out of order. Roll call?
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Pumba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond. Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Esteho. Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes, awesome, Madam Chair. We've continued the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh.
We always have such a uniform Pledge of Allegiance, and I thoroughly enjoy it. So if we could, please.
Why don't we finish this motion, roll call? We did the roll call, actually. Okay, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance, and then I will read what these items were that were going to be continued. Sorry about that, everyone. Let's give it a try altogether. Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America.
Justice for all. Amen.
Just as beautiful and harmonious as always. Okay, so we are taking items 7O through 7S out of order. And those items are all pertaining to 74 Middlesex Turnpike, and the applicant is Norbloom Company for all of these. We have item O, a continued application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 12.1.5, DD Special Permit of the Zoning Bylaw. Item T is a continued application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 1.6.7, discharge from manmade structures into the wetlands of the Northwest Park Plan Development District by law. Item Q is a continued and application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 1.7.5, accessory health club located entirely within a residential facility of the Northwest Park Plan Development District by law. Is a continued application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 1.7.6, Drive Drop Pickup Only of the Northwest Park Plan Development District by law. Continued an application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 1.7.12, gross or spaces and/or attached to detached structures above and below ground and under buildings of the Northwest Park Plan Development District by law. Those are the items that we.
You ready for a motion?
Yes, please.
I make a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of February 18th, 2021, as requested by the applicant's attorney in an email dated February 2nd, 2021.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second my own motion. Nobody else.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Pumba. Member Clerk Raymond. Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Esteho. Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Very good. Is Mark Dupell here, or should we move on to citizens' time?
Arrived.
Oh, he has arrived.
He has arrived. I will say, he said something came up, so his car, so he don't have a bright, brightly lit, but he is here, and he promised me we could all see his face. So Mark, and we are very happy to have him on board. It's been kind of an interesting time with COVID. We haven't crossed the hall, but not, we haven't worked next to each other. But anyway, it's been great so far. Mark, you started like right before Thanksgiving, I think, and so it's been a short time, but I think we've, things have been going well. So, Mark, I'll hand it off to you to say hello to the planning board, and the planning board, if you want to ask any questions, but Mark, you can say hello.
Hello, board.
Hello, Mark. This is Barbara. Thank you for being here.
It's good to be here. I look better in the docs.
Well, Mark, as you know, our board works very closely with your department, and we rely on you heavily. So we're very happy that you're here, and what I want to express to you is that we want to work very close with you. You know that our staff wants to work very closely with you, and we ask that if there is anything that we can do to make things work more smoothly between our two departments, or if there are things that you need from the board, we hope that you'll reach out to us.
I shall. Everything's been going very good so far. They've been more than helpful over there. Bone stop off me, Kristen bone stop off each other all the time. Brady and Liz and Jennifer always supply me with information, so things have been very good so far. And I expect they're gonna continue that way.
I expect that you are correct. I'm sure that will be so. Let me just see if there are any of, any board members that would like to ask a question of Mark while we're, while we have him here. Anyone?
I'm sure this is Mike.
Hi, Mike.
Hi, Mark. I just wanted to say hi. Welcome aboard, and we're glad to have you.
Thank you. Good to be here.
Yep, welcome aboard. This is Joe.
This is Paul. Glad to have you. We look forward to your input as far as the board is concerned.
Hi there. This is Brenda Rappaport. Just wanted to say welcome to the team. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
No, welcome, Mark. Got some good shoes to put on.
Okay, Kristin, was there anything else that you wanted to go over with Mark here, or any questions you wanted to ask?
No, none at this time. I just really wanted to, you know, it's hard to do face-to-face or handshakes. I just wanted to get Mark in front of you guys so you knew who he was, and we weren't just talking about, you know, the new guy in the building department. So now you know, you've seen him. And I think, you know, we look forward to working with Mark and the rest of the department and continue with, you know, the dialogue we've had so far, so.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much, Mark. We look forward to working with you.
Me also. Thanks for taking the time for me.
Of course. Thank you for being here.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay, next on our agenda is citizens' time. If there is anyone in the listening audience that wishes to speak on an item that is not on our agenda tonight, please identify yourself. All right, I do not see anything, so we will move on to announcements.
Sure, Madam Chair. I will begin. The Middlesex III TMA is going to present the Future of Defense Roundtable with Congressman Seth Moulton, and that's taking place on February 10th at 10 o'clock AM via Zoom. If anybody wants to participate, give our, give our office, shoot us an email, and we will get you linked up with that. There's going to be a signage subcommittee meeting on Wednesday, February 8th at 5:30 PM via Zoom. The zoning bylaw review committee will meet on Wednesday, February 10th at 6:30 PM via Zoom. The Housing Partnership will meet on Thursday, February 11th at 6 o'clock via Webex. And then finally, the President's Day holiday is on Monday, February 15th, and all town offices will be closed.
Thank you, Liz. Are you raising your hand?
Yes, I am.
Yeah. Please go ahead.
I'd like to offer my congratulations, and I'm sure the boards can get to the safety officer.
I'm sorry, Ernie. I'm not, I'm having difficulty hearing you. I'm not sure if everyone else is.
A little bit, a little bit underwater.
I'm sorry, Ernie. Would you mind trying again?
Trying again. Yes, it is working.
I think I know, I think I got a little bit of what he was saying. I think he wanted to talk about Officer Cipolletti, who was the, he was the traffic safety officer, and he got promoted, but he retired recently. Kristen, do you want to fill in a little bit more? We're very saddened by his, we're wishing the best, but
Sure.
staff are sad that he's gone.
Let me back up quickly. So Liz, you read the announcements. Did you give us the announcement, the two new announcements that Ernie sent to us?
I sure did.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure that.
I sure did, yep.
Talked about that. So, Ernie, I think, yeah, so Bernie Cipolletti was, is our longtime, very dear friend and safety officer, and he did something else after that, but, and it was great, I'm sure, but, you know, our time with Bernie as a safety officer was fantastic. He was, you know, I think all of, he had our, all of our backs. He was our right-hand guy. He was a fantastic safety officer. He emailed us that he was retiring last week, and Ernie, I'm glad you have his last phone call out on your, your radio that you heard, but he is retiring. It's so sad that we can't have retirement parties. I'm considering sending a sheet cake to his house and having some sort of Zoom. But he was fantastic, and I think, you know, the town is much better for a lot of the decisions we made, and, you know, we can't forget Safety Town. He's champion of Safety Town and everything. I can't say enough, and I have a lot of stories and memories that, and I, you know, I hope he stays involved in Burlington in some way. But, and Ernie, I don't want to take your thunder. You up, so, well, I'll try to mute. Liz, if you mute too, because you have a little background noise, Liz. Okay. Um, anyway, we, we have to kind of schedule some, some sort of retirement Zoom with departments, and we can let you guys know if we do that, but.
Thank you. And on that same subject, I will say, I've actually known Ernie even longer than you folks in the planning department have, because we went to high school together. So I wish him every happiness in his retirement. I'm sure that he'll find a way to keep very busy, and I hope that he'll stay involved in Burlington. So thank you for that, Ernie. I also wanted to add that the Burlington Sculpture Park Committee did have a meeting earlier this week, and our Chair, John Sacks, shared with the team how very successful our holiday promotions were. We were offering in return for donations. We had t-shirts and keychains and little miniature sculptures of Havik the Dog that went like hotcakes, by the way, and we just wanted to let everyone in the public know that those items are still available if people want to make donations to the sculpture park. So, and moving on, we do not have any legal notices or nonapproval, so we'll move on to item 6A on our agenda, administrative matters, and item 6A is a discussion, application for approval of a minor engineering change, 75 Middlesex Turnpike, the Burlington Mall, Tesla Incorporated is the applicant. So I did want to make a brief announcement before we hear from the folks at Tesla. We had a very helpful site meeting earlier this week at the mall so that we could, so, and there were four members there, so we could see exactly where everything is going. But I wanted to let the whole team know that staff is also working on a more comprehensive plan for charging stations throughout the town. So we realize that this is something that's going to be coming all over town and all over the surrounding towns as well, and we need to come up with bylaws and guidelines and a plan for charging stations throughout town. But I would just like for tonight, we're going to focus in just on this one application in front of us, and try not to stray away from this application. We will be dealing with the bigger question separately, but I'd like to stay focused on this one application tonight. So who is here representing the folks at Tesla? Please come forward, identify yourselves.
Hi, you have Trevor Smith from Tesla, colleague Ed Noseworthy from Tesla is on as well, and Justin Feldhouse from Simon, I see him on as well. And so thanks for everyone's time this evening, and thanks for the members meeting us out on site. I agree, that was very productive, and I think we're on our fourth one now, so I think everyone understands kind of what we're looking to accomplish. I think I would, before passing it over to my colleague Ed, who has, I think, some further detailed plans than what you have in front of you. You know, I want to acknowledge that we agree and understand with the previous concerns from a visibility standpoint, and hope this is shown in our new design and new plan. We think this is an appropriate location for the property. I think the overarching theme here that we just want to always consider is that this is an amenity for the overall site. So we want to encourage people to be able to go and patron the tenants that are on, at the property while still kind of not taking up the very prime areas and trying to find kind of that, that good middle ground. And I think this location accomplishes that, as well as accomplishes kind of the aesthetics point of view as well. So I think, I see Brady sharing kind of our plan we had last week, which hasn't changed. But Ed, I don't know if you want to share your screen now and, and kind of show what we have?
Yeah, hi, everyone. This is Ed. Can you hear me? Great. I will, is it okay if I share my screen?
Please go ahead.
Okay, great.
Yep, I got you.
Let me know when you can see it.
And you're up.
Okay, great. Yeah, thanks for the time again, and totally agree with the overall sentiment. I think it was great to sort of get all out there and meet in the field. It seems like a great compromise, and we really appreciate everyone's time visiting the site. I thought it would be helpful for anyone who wasn't there just to kind of show a quick Google Earth image of the area we're talking about. Obviously, it looked much different when we were out there with the snow, but, you know, this is the area we're looking to go. These 12 existing parking stalls, our charge posts will be directly behind this curb line, and then we'll have some equipment, including the utility transformer that we talked about, and a switchgear cabinet, and some supercharger cabinets that we use to, to feed our posts. And, you know, we know sort of visibility was a concern, which is why we sort of moved to the more interior portion of this parking lot, if you will. And then secondly, we had talked about some of the aesthetics with regard to screening. You know, and what we talked about, and what I think we hopefully all agreed on is coming up with some type of landscaping that sort of blends in with what's existing is sort of the most ideal solution as opposed to, you know, maybe a trex or wooden fence enclosure, which sort of stands out a bit more. So again, thought it'd be helpful just to give everyone a visual as I kind of walk through these different PDF snapshots of the area we're talking about. This is sort of the entrance and exit aisle to the parking lot here behind this grass landscaped area, and then what you were just showing a second ago is sort of just the site plan of what we were just looking at. And can, just to confirm, is my screen changing to the new site plan here?
It is.
Okay, great. And just quickly wanted to touch on this one. So this is exactly what I was just showing you. Here's the existing parking stalls. We're looking to go in, charge posts are behind the curb line here, and then our relatively small equipment, including the utility transformer, would be behind the curb line. I've called out some sort of generic screening trees or shrubs that we would plant around our equipment as, so it would hide it from whether you're entering or exiting through this aisle. One thing we talked about onsite is the utility transformer does belong to the utility, EverSource in this case, and we do need to maintain some clearance and access in case they need to maintain that. Our equipment, the shrubs can be a little bit tighter. Just because we don't need as much access, this blue line here is another thing we talked about onsite. Basically, this is a, an underground conduit into a future handhole, and that's sort of something we're doing as a courtesy to a third-party charger. Should they want to come into this area, add some of their charging, they would be able to do so without tying into the exist, undergoing the sort of more involved process of tying into the primary. So hopefully, that will make someone's life behind us a bit easier. So this is, you know, we had just met out there, and we didn't have time to put something super robust together, but I did want to provide some examples, which we can do. So hopefully, if we're able to acquire, you know, conditional approval tonight, that'll sort of be a trigger for us to start to spend money and put something more robust together like you're looking at here. So this is an example of a site we built recently in Connecticut, and you can see, once we do a full survey on this area, and we can put CAD CDs together with our engineers, we can give you something a lot more robust. We can call out the different junipers, arbovites, things like shrub counts, the type, the height, just so that everyone is totally comfortable with exactly what the plan will be, and also if we need to make adjustments. So again, this is sort of just giving you an example, whereas this is a, this last slide is sort of a high level. Just looking at it from a high-level standpoint, eventually, once we have the approval, we'll be able to do something, you know, much more granular like this, and put together, you know, be able to retain a landscape architect and our engineers to give you that more clear picture, if you will. And then once we have that, I think for our first location, we may have provided some renderings. Again, this is another example of a site we're, we're working on in New York right now, but we'll be able to supply some nice renderings and photo simulations of exactly what it will look like, just because I know sometimes it's difficult sort of to envision. But we have great engineers that have these really great photo simulations that, again, help paint the picture. And if there's any questions, we can make adjustments, make adjustments to the simulations, just so that everyone feels comfortable with the screening, that it's sort of gonna match the natural species there and blend in and not stand out. So this is another photo sim, just example here I wanted to show you. And then this is sort of a live-in-the-field example of some plantings that we did to hide our charge posts on the opposite side of these shrubs that you see here. So just sort of walking you through the, the plans that we're able to generate, the photo sims we can show you, and then also what it would look like in the field. So again, overall, we just want to make sure that you know we're happy to accommodate whatever screening you might think is, it fits best. These are sort of some examples of things we've done in the past, but there's another example here of some shrubs that are hiding our equipment. So hopefully, this, this provides some more clarity on what we're looking to do. This is the old plan here. But yeah, hopefully, it spreads some more clarity on what we're looking to do exactly. And, you know, we're totally flexible if you want to make changes, but right now, hopefully, we're just looking for that high-level approval so that we can take the next step, start to spend money on a full survey of this area, work with our engineers, and then sort of give you the more robust CDs for, for final approval before we would start our build. So that's more or less, you know, what we're looking to do.
Okay, thank you, Ed. This is Barbara. Did you have anything else you wanted to present, or can we jump in with questions?
Yeah, let's go to questions. That sounds great.
Okay, Kristin, did you want to add anything before I turn it over to the board?
Um, I guess I do have, I do have a few things to add. I wasn't sure if any of you that were on the sidewalk wanted to say a few words about the sidewalk before I jumped in, just to kind of give the summary of how, where we are.
I thought it was, this is Barbara again. I thought it was helpful to be out there on the site and see exactly what the location is like, and we got some questions answered. I, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, actually. It was helpful to be out there. I don't really have a whole lot more to add, I'm afraid.
This is Paul.
Wow.
Yes, I was just going to say there were four of us there, Barbara and myself and Ernie and Brenda, and we, I think we're in agreement that this was a much better site than the previous site. We thought this was much more appropriate, and there didn't seem to be any question that this was a more appropriate location, and that with the screening and so forth that they're gonna do, this is, they were looking to know whether they thought they would get approval so they could move forward, and I certainly would approve of this site.
Thank you, Paul. Okay. Yes, Ernie?
Oh, good. My audio's working again.
Yes.
Here you. I, being out on the site made a, made a big difference in my mind to actually, more than just trying to visualize it from a plan. And I think it's, I think it's a good site for it, because if you look at it as an amenity and not a gas station, I think it's a good site because of the distance to both the, the new building, what's it called, 85, and also the end of the Sears Building. So people who actually park their car there, charge it for 30 minutes, 60 minutes, and, and be comfortable enough walking to the, either the restaurants over at 85 or the mall itself. So I think the location is good. I would not want to see it way out in the middle of nowhere, because I think that would be too difficult if you consider it as an amenity for people to walk from there to the mall or to the other building, especially older people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ernie. Kristin, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Sure. So, so I did, we do have a decision drafted in front of you, and I wanted to highlight just a handful of things that have been, come up from the last meeting, the sidewalk, and today. Obviously, we've been talking about landscaping and/or fencing, a combination thereof, or landscaping. The goal is to really enhance the island. There is some existing landscaping. I think half the trees on that island are doing quite well. The other half, I think, are questionable. But we want to make sure that we continue to have the dialogue with the applicant about screening of the, the utilities they control, as well as the transformer. The transformer, obviously, owned by EverSource, is a little bit more out of our control, but we certainly can do some screening. So you'll see conditions about landscaping and screening and kind of final approval by my, by myself. I can have myself in consultation with the chair, however you guys want to feel comfortable wording that. I feel comfortable with their ability in other locations to really do a robust job of screening, and I think they've also said that, you know, that that's something that they are looking to do, and, you know, whatever we want to put in there. So therefore, with whatever we want to put in there, we want to make sure that it screens as high as the equipment. We do want to potentially talk about some of the trees that aren't doing so well, if there's some opportunities there for replacement. We also have talked about the elect, the, as they put the transformer in, to add capacity within that, the line that they're bringing out to these spaces to allow for, as we've talked about, additional charging, non-Tesla charging, to locate in these areas to charging, to locate in these areas, to provide for, you know, all, all different types of electric vehicles. So they can, you'll have the conduit already laid with kind of a tap that they can tap into. So you'll see that in the decision. We also talked a little bit about, you know, equipment, equipment being obsolete or non-functional, making sure it's functioning. And if it is obsolete, to be removed. And then kind of talked about, there was some comments about, you know, is, is this a, something that's going to be some, that we have to concern ourselves about trip generation? Is it really just an amenity with the mall? Some conversations about the charging times. So we do have a condition that just kind of asks for some average trip generation with this proposal on the average weekday and Saturday. So we can get kind of a baseline. And if in fact, and hopefully, you know, with Tesla and technology, and if you can plug your car in for five minutes and get a full charge, which, you know, we're not going to stop anyone from, you know, the advent of technology and all these great things. But really to understand a checkpoint in a couple years to figure out, okay, if that's the case, is this something that's really becoming a circulation issue for the mall that we want to check in on and have some measures there in terms of, you know, if it really is 12 cars and turning over like every five minutes, we want to know about that and figure out how that works. That's not what is happening now. That's not at all that's being proposed. That's not what they've indicated in terms of the usage of these, these 12 spaces. But, you know, not knowing exactly what the future holds. Hopefully, things are going to, you know, move in a really good direction for technology. But what does that mean? So just to check in there. We have a two-year check-in. And then we asked the mall yesterday at onsite, you know, what their lease terms were. Was it a five and five? You know, so we want to work with Simon to figure Simon and Tesla to figure out, you know, what that is and to make sure we can understand that checkpoint of circulation and trip generation, you know, within that, within their agreements as well. So if, you know, if it's revised and there's something we wanted to change, we can have the ability to talk through that. Um, I think, I think I touched on everything. If anyone has any questions on that, I'm happy to answer. But otherwise, as we've said before, I mean, you know, we support, we support this as an amenity to the mall. We support electric vehicles. You know, it would be great if Tesla charging and all other charging was all universal. And I'm sure someday it will be. It's not today. And I don't, you know, I don't think we want to have other charging and not Tesla charging. So, you know, everybody jump in the pool and hopefully everybody can be universal someday. So, but otherwise, we support the application and the recommended changes. And I think the dialogue at the site walk was very good.
Okay, thank you, Kristin. This is Barbara. I'm going to turn this over to the board for questions. I'm going to start with the members that were not able, who are not able to attend the site walk because those of us who were there did have a chance to ask questions at that time. So I'm going to see if Bill, if Bill Gaffney is available, if he would like to ask any questions or make any comments, Bill?
Sure. Thanks, thanks, Madam Chair. Yeah, unfortunately, I couldn't make that do the day change. And I guess I would continue to have concerns about that being an amenity versus what it actually is. If you know what the term is, it's a supercharging station, like the same term as a gas station. So that's what it is. That's not an amenity to the mall. It's actually a function to, to charge up your car. And again, the technology is moving much faster than, than what I think everyone has a sense here. And maybe the applicant isn't even in that division of Tesla to understand that. The five-year lease is, is very long with regard to what the technology's doing here. I feel like I'm reliving history again, and people have to remember history, right? You know, the, the VHS versus Betamax, right? Which one went out? Once, when you're going to, one's getting obsolete very, very quickly when that happened. And if you recall back at the, the Sears Auto, right, that, that island that they had right there, she pulled in the covering, that was for gas pumps, right? That was going to be an amenity to the mall back, back in the day. And that wasn't, that, that didn't come about. So I think that was the right plan for that. And I think, right here, this is the, the wrong plan for that in the same area, because of basically putting a charging station, a, a fueling station, let's call it in general, as we go forward. And I think we're premature to approve it, to be quite honest with you, until we have a strategy out there as planners. The screening concerns me to wait till later. It looks like they have good screening opportunities. I think we should really look at that instead of kind of, you know, have the chair and the planning department look at that. This is a very important, if you guys approve this, this is a very important place to look at the specific screening of that. I would be in favor of screening both from by fence and by, by landscaping around those, on those facilities. I think if you look at Linfield, you, if you put the fencing there, that helps. And if you buffer that with, with landscaping, I think it improves it even more. So you get the double, the double buffering here. If you looked at the New York one, I don't know if that fencing was for a, for a trash compactor, or if it was for the, the charging stations themselves. But yeah, I think just in general, yeah, this, 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 this doesn't, if I, if I kind of know where the, the industry's going here, this, this does not make sense for it to be here. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Bill. Member Espo.
No questions, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Joe and Pemba.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill, actually, I brought up a lot of the same issues as you did. I have a lot of the same concerns. My feeling at this point in time is that, and Brady has assured us that we're kind of moving forward with a comprehensive plan on this stuff. But I just feel like the technology is changing so rapidly that this is going to be old technology in a very short time. And when that becomes the case, and into the future, when, you know, GM has already said they're going to stop selling gas vehicles at some point in time in the near future. And this is going to be a much bigger issue than it is right now. And I think it's going to have to be addressed in a comprehensive way. You know, maybe in conjunction with, you know, what's going to happen with the gas stations that are in town, things like that. But all that being said, I think, you know, right now, unfortunately, you know, fortunately for them, unfortunately for us, they've presented us with an application. And I, I feel like, at this point in time, I, you know, my feeling is that I think, you know, the mall has, you know, is, is looking for additional ways to, you know, create some different options for them to, to be able to continue in business and things like that. My, I guess so, my long-term concern is we need to do this comprehensively. Short-term, I, I want, just want enough assurances that this is going to be screened properly, number one. Number two, that we are going to be able to look at this within a short period of time of it being in place and, and, and seeing where we are technology-wise. And if this is something that can be, you know, somewhat downsized or mitigated, or, or done comprehen- comprehensively within a short period of time going forward into the future, that we're going to be able to look at that and, and to then fit it into our overall plan, you know, for charging stations. And number three, one of the other concerns I had, which I brought up in the past, was the, the ability for this thing to be, for security to be around while this is, because this is a use that's going to happen all night long. You know, I, I understand they're looking at it as an amenity right now for the mall. During mall hours, there'll be mall security there. After mall hours, there are still going to be people charging their vehicles. In a gas station, when we allow them to, to gas up cars all night long, there's a, there's typically an attendant that's present in case of an emergency or in case, you know, there's an issue that goes on, to be able to call the police or get somebody on-site, or fire department, or whatever it is. So I want some assurances that there will be security if this is going to be accessible all night long. So those are some of my concerns. I do like this location better than the other location. But I, I share a lot of those concerns of Bill's and I, but I, at this point, I'm, I'm not, I'm not willing to deny the plan because of that reason. But I, I do think we need to immediately be on a comprehensive plan, and this all needs to be looked at in a much more comprehensive way.
Okay.
That's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Joe. Perhaps we could get an answer from, I think probably it would be the mall, from Justin, perhaps, regarding the security issue?
Sure. We, we maintain 24-hour security all the time, 365 days a year. So there would, there would be no lapse of coverage.
Okay, great. Perfect.
Thank you. Good to know. All right. Then I'm going to move on to the members who were present for our meeting. Brenda, did you have any other questions you wanted to ask?
Um, I guess, Justin, in regard to that security, is it, is it like a, an attendant that, you know, that, you know, roams around the parking lot? Or are we talking security that there's cameras? What type of security is offered?
We're talking about, we're, we're talking about a person who is roaming the parking lot, roaming the interior of the building as well.
Okay, thank you. Like some of, you know, the other members, I, I do share that concern. Again, you know, I definitely like this location better than the other, the other location that was previously presented to us. You know, I, I think with the checks and, you know, the checkpoints throughout the course of the term of the initial lease and, and any options thereafter, I think is really important so that we can kind of keep a close eye on, on something that's really in its infancy stages. But, you know, I, I am in support of this project. But again, you know, mirroring what other members are, are stating, as well as the comprehensive plan. We really need to be working on that because I don't think that this is going to be the first of, I think this is the first of many applications in the near future. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Brenda. Paul Raymond, did you have any other questions you wanted to ask that you didn't get to ask when we were out at site?
No, I was fine with that. As I said, it seemed to be a concurrent that this was the best location. And, and we did discuss that, you know, it's kind of hard. We're almost working with a moving, moving target, because the technology is moving so quickly. But we have an application before us. And so that's what I'm considering that we're dealing with, that we, the best we can. And, and I did, somebody else mentioned that, that this location was historically almost an automobile usage, because Sears was right across the street. And I mean, that was 7:30 in the morning to, God knows what, there were cars going back and forth. So people can come right down that entrance there and right into this spot. So I think that will, you know, be the, the main route, what have you. But for what we're looking at, I'm, I'm ready to approve this. So these people can go and go forward. The other alternative would be to not allow them to. And, you know, then we're, we and they were kind of at sea. But that's my comments.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Ernie, did you have any questions?
Uh, sure. A, a comment first. The, the reason, I, I guess I have to explain the reason why I'm considering an amenity rather than a full-service station like a gas station. From what I understand, the majority, actually much more than majority, 75 to 80% of the people are now recharging at home. So this is, so that's why I consider it an amenity rather than something, although, although it is a fueling station, it is an alternate fueling station. Right now, nobody stores gasoline at home, as far as I know, to, to fuel their car. But people, people are doing the electric refueling at, or electric charging at home. And also, I'm, I'm kind of comfortable with this because there is, there is both a 24-month and a length of lease review period. If I could just ask staff, okay, so this, this is kind of like a report to the planning board type review. And then what happens if we see something that is, if we see much more gritty use than we think it might be, and, and it is affecting the circulation? Can I ask Kristin that question?
Of course.
Sure. So we have a question of kind of in, so a couple of different things. So we have kind of a report within 24 months of operations, the applicant should submit to the planning department a memo containing the following information.
Right.
Utilization of spaces, ability to offer service to non-Tesla vehicles, average speed of charge, and an update on equipment and its function and, and trip generation. And that's why we wanted to get a baseline trip generation. We also ask that, and just note that if any of the following happen, it, they'll need to come back for modification. And that's, you know, obviously, additional charging stations, if there's additional equipment outside of the, the enclosures and the enclosure area that's already permitted. And then really looking again, as I mentioned before, that it's trip generation, and if it exceeds kind of 30% of what we initially forecasted. And I, we can talk about that number. I was just trying to figure out like, what would be substantial enough to say we need to come back and talk about this. But I think right now, we're looking at this kind of as an amenity. We've talked about if people park in these spaces, they charge their car, they're there at a Christmas shop for five hours. So, so be it, they're there. If someone parks in these spaces and they don't charge, they're, it's been noted that they're, you know, they're not kicking them out. It's not like the valet spaces at some of the restaurants where they put a cone there and say, only you can be here. So these are kind of amenities for the mall. You can also come charge if you want. And then the, the last one that I, I mean, the, and let me actually get back to that. So the trip generation piece, because we still need to be thinking about this in terms of what I mentioned in, in the approval criteria of site plan, in terms of, you know, circulation, see, health, you know, health and safety, you know, environmental issues. So I, I really think what the impacts we're getting, we don't, you know, it's not a gas station, we don't have gas, we don't have an environmental impact. But we do have it, we potentially could have a circulation impact. Not today. I'm not concerned about today in terms of what they're proposing. But, you know, if there is one, we just want to check that. And then, again, the same types of questions, but in line with whatever that lease term is, we have to work with the mall and Tesla to figure that out. Just so we all can be on the same page moving forward with what, what works. And that's not, they need to come before us, but really those trigger points above, we wanted to outline, you definitely need to come before us if, as an amendment, if any of these things happen. I don't know, it's one of those, you don't want to, it's so hard with technology evolving. And I know those of you that are working on wireless with us, it's kind of like, you know, throwing a dart at a dartboard that's, you know, moving all the time. So, you know, you want to make sure you're accommodating what's here. You want to make sure there's some growth within that, but also make sure that we're protecting any impacts that we may or may not see in the future. So, so yes, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you answering my question. And I, like the other members, I'm sure, are looking forward to some sort of a comprehensive plan for, for these electric vehicle charging stations to be forthcoming from the planning board. So we can, we can have a standard. And, and this may help us set that too, as we see it move along. But other than that, I'm, I'm, I'm perfectly willing to vote for this with the safeguards that are in place. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ernie. I see Bill has his hand up. Before I turn it over to Bill, my quick comments. I agree, this location is certainly better than what we had before. I share some of the concerns, but I am willing to vote for this. I do think that I'd like to see that review period be two years and four years, because as I understand it, the lease period was five years. So I think we need to review it before the lease is finished. So that if they are going to up, if they decide to extend the lease, we get a chance at the four-year mark to weigh in again before the, the lease is up. I also want to make sure that the screening is robust. And I am comfortable with this going to staff and the chair, which probably won't be me at that time. But if other members prefer that the landscape plan comes to the full board, I am also fine with that. Bill, I see you have your hand up. What can I do for you?
Thank you. Thank you, Barbara. And thank you for noticing the, the hand emoji there. I, again, I wasn't at the, the site walk. But was a question asked, if this is going to, people are going to be charged for this, or is it going to be free?
That question, are you talking about the consumers? Or are you talking about, you mean the Tesla owners?
The, the, yeah, the Tesla owners, yeah.
That, that question did come up. And as I understand it, and, and the Tesla folks can correct me if I'm wrong, some Tesla owners, owners have, as part of their purchase, they get free charging. Others will be paying a rate. So it would depend on the individual Tesla owner.
Okay. Is there a percentage of which ones have which?
I don't know the answer to that question. Perhaps.
I think, I guess, I think right now, it's about 50%. I were a Tesla owner, and I had a Tesla owner contact me on this. He was excited about, he didn't care where it was. But all he cared was that he could charge his. charge his Tesla there. So instead of charging it at home and costing him, he would, he would go over to the mall for whatever reason. And, and so it's not an amenity to the mall, it's kind of the reverse of that, he'd be doing it because he'd be getting a free charge. So I think you're, you're, the, if you look at human behavior on that, you're kind of flipping it's on his head and you say, come on down versus having the option of you doing it at your house because you've got a free charge if you become a part of that program.
So I think I can help address that a little bit. 80% of our customers get out of their car for at least 10 minutes and use the amenity where they're at. So we do look at it as an amenity. And just to, to, to help touch on the, the technology that's moving too, I think it'd just be helpful to add some context. So obviously, yes, technology will always improve. Maybe one day there will be a five-minute charger. But if that five-minute charger came out tomorrow, we still wouldn't install it at the mall. The whole purpose, we have different charging solutions for different locations. For instance, we have level-two chargers that we install at workplace and ski slopes where you're going to be in there for six to eight hours. Same thing at your house, you have a level-two charger, you're going to be there for eight hours, you go home and plug it in, just like you do your phone. But the, the purpose of, you know, level three at an amenity like a Simon Mall is just that, it's to be ubiquitous and to incorporate it into your daily lives. And that 30-minute dwell time is consistent with what you see for, you know, I think Justin pointed this out on site, that their, their average customer is there for 30 minutes. So the, the dwell time makes sense for this amenity. And we would only install this charging solution of a 30-minute dwell time, level three, at a, a place like a mall. A five-minute charger, if it ever came out years down the line, would be maybe more suitable for like the Lexington I-95 travel plaza where you sort of pull in, pull off, and you're just looking to charge up real quick. But I think, uh, you know, these, these, these chargers in the mall sort of are in concert with each other. And that's why that solution is sort of placed at this site.
Okay.
Madam Chair, could I, could I, uh, Bill, you, are you all say, I, I had something on that line that I would.
Go ahead, Joe.
Like to comment on. So I actually brought this up earlier in the pre-meeting, was exactly that, that item. When it, when, at the point when it becomes a five-minute charge, because it was explained to me that during the, the site meeting that they, they said, basically, you, you don't look at it as a gas station, you look at it as charging your phone. You know, it's, it's something that you, you know, you, uh, you, you, you don't, you do it mainly at home, you only do it out here when it's, uh, you know, when you have to, and when you're on the road, and when you're on a long trip. And my comment to that was, well, yeah, right now, because if it takes a half hour or an hour to charge, most likely that's, that's going to be the reason that you're going to charge it here versus at your house. But when it, when it becomes a five-minute charge and combined with that, and I, and I, you know, again, I, I respectfully disagree with the applicant on this matter, simply because, yeah, if you look at the number of Teslas out there right now, they probably have no intention on doing a five-minute charge in these locations. But, but 20 years, 10 years down the road, when there's, you know, when they're no longer selling gas vehicles and every car out there is either a Tesla or some other electric vehicle. I think this, you know, that it's going to be, there's not going to be enough charging stations in this location, you know, to be doing 30-minute or hour charges. So you're either going to have to add a, a lot more of these chargers, or you're going to have to reduce the time down to five minutes. You know, if, if the technology allows. So I think probably, as you say, right now, your intention, given the amount of vehicles on the road, is to never change those to five-minute charges. I think in the future, you're going to have to be forced to, or you're going to have to put a lot more charging stations in there.
Can I?
And which case, in which case, again, let me, again, just to follow my thought full circle is, in which case, people will be going, instead of charging them at the house and paying for the, for the charge at their house, they'll go to the mall and charge it for five minutes and get a full charge at Tesla's expense. And, and so I think it's going to be more, no longer will it be equivalent of charging your phone, it's going to be a gas station, you know? And that's kind of my thoughts on it, if you, if you apply rational thinking to it. And, and I think it's more aligned, in line with Bill's thoughts. And I think Bill's probably put a lot more thought into this than I have in the, in the past.
Okay, thank, thank you, Joe. Look, I, I do think that, I mean, obviously, we have a lot of questions and it's evolving technology and that's what's concerning everyone. But as we discussed in the beginning of the meeting, we are going to have our staff and work on a more comprehensive plan for the, for charging stations throughout town. Tonight, we're voting just on this that's in front of us today with the technology that we have today, because that's really all we can vote on right now. So I would like to bring this to a vote. I think it, we've probably answered all the questions we need to. I don't believe we need to send this to audience members, am I correct? Kristen, that this is a minor engineering change, so we can just proceed?
It's up to you, uh, but yes, you can just proceed, it's up to you.
I would like to just proceed. We've already spent an hour on this and we have a full agenda, we need to get moving. So I am looking for a motion, please, on this.
Okay. Madam Chair, this is Ernie, I'd like to make a motion to approve, approve the request for approval of a minor engineering change for property located at 75 and 85 Middlesex Turnpike to install 12 electric charging posts and one light pole within the existing parking area and to install three supercharger cabinets, one panel board, and one transformer within a landscape screened area within the existing island as reflected on a site claim entitled Tesla Superchargers, Simon Mall, 12 Superchargers, 75 Middlesex Turnpike, Burlington, Mass., 1803, prepared by Tesla, dated September 10th, 2020, revised to January 6, 2021, consisting of 13 sheets, subject to the following terms, revisions, terms, and conditions.
Madam Chair, so Mike, I'll second that motion.
Chairman Maroon. Vice Chairman Inpemba.
Yeah, just for discussion, I just want to make sure that the review was in there for two years and four years, that the screening will be reviewed by staff or, and/or the chair before it's signed off on. And there will always be live security on as long as these are in use. Just those, I want to make sure those are in this motion. And if they are, I'm a yes.
Yes.
Barbara, you're muted.
Thank you. And it will be staff and chair to review screening. Thank you.
Okay, so, Member Clark Raymond. Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
No.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Next item, my objection is item 7A, a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section 4.2.6.9, fast food establishment of the zoning by 390 Cambridge Street, International Trade Network, doing business as Kebab Grill and Pizzeria is the app. Welcome and thank you for your patience. Who is here representing Kebab Grill?
Yes, hello, everyone. This is Mohammed El-Fan. I'm the owner.
Thank you, welcome. I know this is your second appearance here tonight. Did you have anything new that you wanted to present to the board?
No, just last, last hearing, we ended up at, I was requesting to have 12 seating instead of mine and we left it at that, so.
Yes.
If, and, yes, and I just came back to that. We notify all the tenants and everyone at the, anyone out there, section with that.
Okay, thank you. Kristen, would you like to stick the board on anything?
Um, so we did, after the last meeting, notify, we, Brady brought over the legal notice to all the tenants, so they, they have been notified. We did, um, hear from one tenant, uh, here by Nicole, who's been there quite a long time, just about the general concern that we've already stated and know about the parking. It is a plaza with not a ton of parking. But at the last meeting, and the applicant can, applicant can also speak to this, but he had mentioned the last meeting that he did live close by and it was a family business and he could park employees at his, at his home location and not take up those spaces within the site itself. We did talk about the last tenant here, the last couple of tenants have been nine seats. We have a provision in here, because we talked about, you know, can they go up to 12? We did kind of talk through that a little bit at the last meeting. So we have a, you can go up to 12 with a provision in a year to review. We talked a little bit more at the pre-meeting earlier with the chair and vice chair as to, you know, should it be nine and then go up to 12 or 12 and go down to nine? And just kind of talking about the business viability of the plaza. And so I think I, I feel comfortable, um, especially comfortable with the fact that off-site, there's off-site options for employees. That was something that the very first tenant of this plaza here had at other, at another commercial site, which I think helped quite a bit. But overall, I guess I just want to hear a little bit more from the board if there's any neighbors who have concern. But the previous tenant was nine seats, so nine seats is three parking spaces, 12 seats would be four parking spaces in terms of zoning compliance. You know, utilization on-site is another matter. So anyway, just, just talk through that. Overall, it's, we're comfortable, they do meet zoning, it's just that question of nine seats or 12 seats. I believe the applicant spoke about the takeout and delivery portion of his business. So it was definitely something that came up from the neighbors, that they, they hope it's very much ta, delivery and, and takeout and not as much inside dining to make sure the spaces are open. But, but anyway, I'll let the, hand it over to the board and if the applicant wants to weigh in on any of those comments, to feel free to do so.
Okay, thank you, Kristen. Um, I think I'm going to just ask all my fellow board members to raise your hand electronically or physically if they want to speak. I don't think I need to call on everyone if everyone doesn't necessarily have questions. Mike Espo, I see you waving your hand.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for noticing. I wasn't that familiar with the site. I mean, I've driven by it and I drive by it every day, but I never actually looked at it, never really been in there. So I went over there, took a look, talked to some of the businesses in the plaza. And I really want to see the restaurant succeed because we've seen a lot of businesses go in and out of there. And I'd really like to see, I think it sounds like something that I would want to even go, go often. It sounds good, kebabs sound awesome. I wasn't like kebabs. But I'm strongly against going over the nine seats. And it wouldn't be in favor of this if we go any, any more than the nine, it's a tough parking lot. And if you look at the spots in the parking lot, they're not really full-size parking spots. They look smaller than a normal parking spot, which I think was done after the renovation was done over there, I think I heard that correctly. And when it snows, they even lose more parking because of the snow, they have no other place to put the snow. So if we go over nine, I'm not in favor of this, but if we could maybe somehow start with the nine, put in a period of time for review and after that, if we find it's working out fine, and he still wants the extra three seats, maybe we could look at it at a future point in time. But at this point in time, I'd love to just start with the nine. And again, I want nothing more than this business to succeed because if he does, then it's good for everybody. So that's where I am, that's all I had, Madam Chair, thanks.
Thank you, Mike. I'm going to do something unusual and jump in and say something first because it's something I want my fellow board members to consider and then I'm going to let you all jump in too. I understand where you're coming from, Mike, with the nine seats versus 12. But what I, what really changed things for me is the fact that employees are not going to be parking here. In the past, we had restaurants that had nine seats and they had employees parking there. If the employees are not parking there, 12 seats means one more parking space being taken up. But it's not really more than before because there are no employees parking there. So that makes a difference for me. And I know that we've had other restaurants in this location before and they have not been successful. I'm inclined to give them the extra seats just in the hopes that it might help them have more success. And I don't think it would make a difference in terms of the parking because the employees are parking at the owner's home. So that's something I wanted to just remind everyone of because that's unusual, we don't usually see that. So I wanted to bring, put that out there and then I'll turn it over. I think, Joe, you had your hand up. Please go ahead.
Thank, thank you, Barbara. Yeah, I, I have, I share the same concern. And I know Barbara said that the, so one of, my biggest concern is that here by Nicole, who has been, had, has been an established business there for a long time, is not going to be forced to go out of business because she doesn't have enough parking to accommodate her business. I also want to see this business succeed. My inclination was to say the same thing Mike had said, which would be nine, nine seats and review it after a month and go up. The alternative could be give them 12 seats, review it after a month and go down if it's a problem. But when Barbara, you know, made the statement about the employees not parking there, are we able to get assurances? And will that be in the decision that there will be no employees parking on the site? It, you know, because if we can have that assurance, I think it may, it may put my concerns to rest with going, you know, with the, the additional seats in there.
Good question.
It was something the applicant mentioned at the last meeting. I would actually just ask the applicant how much they can, that, that's a possibility.
If they would be willing to commit to that. Mr. El-Fan?
Yes, so sure, of course. I mean, parking, I know there is a problem in this plaza, there's practically like last two days after the snow, I see it's, uh, even me without being open, it's, I see it's an issue. But as far as me giving assurance, I know parking here, I mean, I, I, I can park my vehicle there, I cannot have the delivery drivers park, not parking outside. So that would be my employee as well, you know? Because how, how are we going to do delivery without having the vehicle on site? Plus, when I go shopping for the supplies, you know, I have to bring my vehicle here, load, unload. So I cannot give 100% assurance that there will be absolutely no employee parking outside at all. And we will do our best, it's in my own best interest to have more parking available for customers, you know, if, as much as we can to make sure there's more parking for the customer, that's good for us. I mean, uh, but it's tough to give assurance, you know, like there will be no parking at all.
Fair enough. Thank you, Mr. El-Fan.
Well, I guess what my question is, is the, the employees. He, he talked about delivery people, he didn't really talk about employees. So if, if the employees are truly going to park at his place, then he can give those assurances. I know he can't, he can't give us assurances that people aren't going to deliver because they're always going to have to deliver. But, you know, I guess that's the concern, is it, are the employees not going to park there or are they going to park there? You know, we could get those assurances. If not, I would rather go, you know, again, I would rather go with the nine and then review it after a month. And if it's not an issue at all, then, you know, look at bumping it up to the 12 after that. But, um, anyway.
Fair enough, Joe. I think, so Mr. El-Fan, the question is, we understand that there would be times when you're loading or unloading things and the, delivery trucks may be coming in and out. But in terms of employees who would be theoretically arriving for work and staying for eight hours, can you assure us that those employees and yourself, when you're there for an entire shift, would not be parking on-site? And would you be willing to give us those assurances and have that put in the decision?
Well, again, the, I, I will offer my employees, the ones that are going to be working full shift here to park off-site. But if there is an employee that, I mean, uh, employees come and go, I don't know if there is an employee is not comfortable walking. So block in the dark after 10, 10:00 PM or after 11:00, I cannot force them to do that. I mean, that's another consideration for safety as well. But, you know, as far as me offering them parking, that shouldn't be a problem because that's good for our business to have more parking for customers.
Okay.
So, so we are, for multi-tenant plazas, we, we just talked about this with Five Below at Crossroads, but we have a condition that employees shall park, you know, not in the main areas of, just, just our general employee parking condition is not in the main areas with patron partner parking. I mean, obviously, if, if employees are in need or have some other reason that they need to park closer, we can't prohibit that. And I, I'll also, you know, this business being probably And I also, you know, this business being probably primarily takeout and delivery, I think we do have to recognize that there's going to be an employee that's the delivery employee that will be in and out of the store, hopefully not on site that often, but on site to load up and then, you know, go out. But anyway, so I think it's one of those things like as much as we can control without being discriminatory, that's what we're asking the applicant to kind of do the same.
Okay. Thank you, Kristin. Are there any other planning board members that had questions or comments? Please speak up or raise your hands.
Barbara, this is Paul.
Hi, Paul.
Yes, the reasons we're Americans and we love to be in our cars and we're not going to go a place where we can't park, that's just the way it is. And whether it's nine or 12 seats in there, if people can't park, they're they're not going to go there. And and that's the reason it's a failed site. So I appreciate Mike's thoughts on that. But, you know, I don't think it makes much difference whether there's there's nine or 12. And I I wish them good luck. But, you know, if people can't park, it's going to remain a failed site. So to me, the number of seats really is irrelevant. It's too bad, but when the building was built, it was built such that there was only that very small part of parking. And maybe that was not the correct decision to make. You know, maybe they should have made the building a little shorter so people could park for the businesses are there. But that's, you know, if I would be inclined if they if they want to try it and think they can make it work to approve it. But I would say that with good luck and I believe it'll be back before us before too long. But thanks, that's my comments. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Paul. So it seems to me that the only question before us really is nine seats versus 12 seats. So I'm going to do a quick poll of the of the board because that's really the only thing still in question. And I'm going to call your name. I'm going to ask you to tell me, excuse me, not six or nine, nine or 12, to tell me if you want to if you want to vote for nine or 12. Okay? So, Joe.
So without those assurances about the employees, I'm going to have to go with nine.
Okay, nine. Paul.
Nine.
Ernie.
Nine and come back if it looks like he can accommodate another three and we'll talk to him.
Mike.
Nine.
Okay, we don't need to go any further. We'll approve for nine with the understanding that the business owner can back and ask for 12 after a period of time if it's proven that there are no conflicts with parking. How does that sound? All right. I have, oh, wait, this is a public hearing, I think. So is there anyone here in the listening audience that would like to make a comment or ask a question regarding this application?
Looks like there's somebody that's on chat.
Brennan is hand raised. Brennan?
Patrice Brennan, has their hand raised?
Yes, is Patrice here? Patrice, did you want to speak?
I think she's muted.
Patrice, I think you're muted, Patrice. If you could unmute yourself, you can speak. One more time, Patrice, you are muted. If you would like to speak, please unmute yourself. Okay.
Madam Chair, a suggestion, since she's on chat, maybe we can just have somebody read that into the record or whatever.
Oh, she is. Okay, I'm sorry, I can read that. Is this Patrice? All right, I'll read this. From Patrice Brennan, I live behind the business and I'm concerned about the traffic increase in seating. I was not notified at the first meeting. I live on Doherty Ave. And if there is an overflow of cars in the lot, they may block the road. There is also two stores empty right now and someday they may be full. Okay? Thank you, Patrice. So I think I could what I gleaned from that is Patrice would prefer that we go with nine seats instead of 12. Nine is what was there before, so that would not be any change from from the previous business. Thank you, Patrice. If you have anything else you wanted to say, you're welcome to chime in. Okay, therefore, I think I am ready for a motion on this.
Do we close the public hearing?
Yes, please.
I shall move.
Second.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman in Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond. Member Covino. Member Estejo.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport. So moved.
For motion?
Yes, please.
Madam Chair, I make a motion. Let's, okay, I make a motion to request for one special permit pursuant to section 4.2.6.9, fast order food establishment of the Burlington zoning bylaw to permit the operation of a fast food order establishment by the name of Kebab Grill and Pizzeria for property located in the general business, just general business BG district located at 390 Cambridge Street, subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit A attached.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman in Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino. Member Estejo.
Yes.
Member Gaffney. Member Rappaport.
Okay, Liz, did you get everyone you needed?
I'm going to ask Member Clerk Raymond, what are you voting?
Yes.
Okay, Member Covino, I didn't hear you.
Sorry. Yes.
Excellent. Member Estejo, I heard, Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Excellent. And Member Rappaport, you, I think you said yes.
Yes.
I saw your mouth, yes. Okay, cool.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. And welcome to Burlington. We wish you free luck and we hope I'm looking forward to trying out the restaurant. When do you expect to open?
Well, I have inspection schedules, so we have, we're looking forward within next week to 10 days.
Wonderful. I will look for that. Thank you.
Welcome and good luck.
Good luck.
Yes. Okay, I'm now looking.
I make a motion to take items B and C together for discussion purposes.
Second.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman in Pemba. Member Clerk Raymond. Member Covino. Member Estejo.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport. So moved.
Okay, thank you. Item 7B is a continued public hearing application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section 4.2.2.23, passenger stations, landing fields, sites, buildings and facilities for public services, public works, structures of the zoning bylaw 41 Burlington Mall Road, Leahy Clinic Foundation Incorporated is the app. Hearing application for approval of the site plan 41 Burlington Mall Road, Leahy Clinic Foundation Incorporated is the applicant. So this is, as everyone knows, the helicopter landing site at the Leahy Clinic Emergency Room. Who do we have representing Leahy Clinic here tonight? Okay, I know there's someone here representing Leahy.
I I started speaking and, okay, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, it's.
Mark, hi, Mark, welcome.
Quote of the year, I got to unmute myself. Good evening, Madam Chair. For the record, attorney Mark Vaughn here tonight representing Leahy Health in connection with the application. And we have same folks that participated at your meeting a couple of weeks ago, representatives of Leahy that are here, including Michael Slager, Director of Planning, Construction for Leahy, our civil engineer, Tim Williams. We have our helipad consultant as well, Jeff Sterwerf. And also have a representative of MedFlight here, Rick Keenan, who I think might be able to shed some light on, you know, one of the questions that came up from the board at the prior meeting relative to the the flight path for MedFlight landings and takeoffs. But if I could maybe start with the the diagram of the aerial that's on the on the screen right now. We thought this might just be a helpful graphic to show basically that shows the campus. I know what we had showed before was just the raw site plan. This is actually the aerial of the Leahy campus itself. Obviously, you can see up at the top of the screen where the existing helipad is today. And then towards the bottom of the screen, nearer the district, is where the proposed helideck would be located. In the interest of time, I guess I won't go into the history again in terms of, you know, how we got to where we are. But suffice it to say that we, you know, the helicopter landing started off at the TRW Field. That was not something that resonated well with with neighbors quite often. So it was moved onto the campus, which is where it is today. And this location that we're talking about now for the proposed helideck, we feel is a better location than on top of the roof, which is where it was originally envisioned back as as part of the 2014 approval process. The other component of this application, Madam Chair, is that very de minimis MRI addition towards Mall Road, that portion of the campus there, not as sexy and glamorous as the as the helideck, but still something that's very important for Leahy in terms of meeting its its mission for its patients of of the hospital. So what I I want to thank Kristin, Liz and Brady. We were able to have a very productive DCM meeting again earlier this week with the department heads to talk about the project and try to address any lingering questions or matters that that might be there. But, you know, one item that I did want to address is I think that there was questions as to whether we would need to stop traffic at all for any landings or takeoffs for MedFlights. And our consultants are here and they can certainly answer that in more detail as needed. But we do not believe that there's any need to be to have to do that. Where the helipad is located today, when there are landings and takeoffs, there is no stoppage of of vehicle traffic in that area. And that's with the helipad that's actually on the ground there. With the new location, it being raised as we went through in detail with the board previously, we don't feel that there's any need and there's no FAA requirement to have to stop traffic that's on that ring road. We think that that can certainly peacefully coexist. So I know that Leahy is prepared, obviously, to stop any pedestrian traffic on the sidewalk area and in and around that spot during any landings or takeoffs. But in terms of the stoppage of traffic itself, that does not appear to be necessary. So I wanted to just speak to that. But if the board wanted at this point, I think it might be helpful to just maybe talk about the the flight path because I know that that was something that had come up before.
Yes, please, Mark, that would be what we want to hear. Thank you.
Sure. So I'm going to just give the 20 second on it, but you'll see the 128 is the area towards the middle of the screen running left to right. The Leahy campus is, I don't know if you can show that on the mouse, but the Leahy campus is right there where the mouse is showing it between Mall Road and 128. As we described before, the heli, MedFlight travel pattern would be coming in from the 128 area and either of those two. And then after they after they land, then they basically would go towards Mall Road and do an immediate U-turn to get back out onto 128. Because ultimately, the MedFlight headquarters, as I understand it, is at Hanscom. So that's where they would be going after they visit Leahy Medical Center here. But what I thought I could do is maybe introduce Rick and he can speak to that since this is direct from the the operator themselves, so.
Yes, please do. And Rick, as you explain this to us, what we're really trying to figure out, and I'm, I'd like you to clarify, is if this is going to be taking helicopters directly over residential neighborhoods?
Thank you, Mark, and thank you, Madam Chair. I'll start out by saying that Boston MedFlight endeavors not to fly over residential areas. Being involved in neighborly flying and safe flying, we always try to remain over thorough thoroughfares and not over residential areas unless we're at sufficient altitude that that it would be permissible and not cause any disturbance on the ground. So that's our opening argument. Anytime we have an issue like this, we endeavor not to fly over residential areas unless there's a safety of flight issue where we have to. So to expound a little bit upon what Mark had said earlier, the typical flight paths for predominant winds, and again, predominant winds are most important for helicopters because you endeavor to land into the wind or into a crosswind, but never to a tailwind. So the predominant winds in this area are out of the west. So we are going to always try to land into those winds or as close as we can into those winds and take off into those winds. So our normal flight path would be either north or south along Route 28 and then turning in towards the new helipad, delivering the patient and then returning to our base, which was as mentioned, is at Hanscom. So taking off, taking off from the proposed helipad, we would take off in the direction of Mall Road, but immediately make a turn into the predominant winds, which would be towards making a left turn and then continuing that turnaround to get back towards 128. Again, that's with the predominant winds. When we have abnormal winds, such as a nor'easter or such as a frontal passage, that may not be possible. However, we will do our best to endeavor not to fly over residential areas. The existing helipad has some very constrained approaches and departures also to remain clear of residential areas. But we, to at least to my knowledge in the way that pilots fly, we endeavor to stay away from those residential areas. So I guess I can answer any questions you may have about the characteristics of our helicopters or our intended flight paths.
Thank you, Rick. I have a quick question for staff because, you know, maybe it's my old eyes. I'm having I'm trying to figure out, looking at this aerial, to me, this looks like this is going to be going over the Laurel Hill Lane neighborhood and maybe parts of Lexington Street. Am I reading this correctly?
Um, so it is Kristin Kazner. So this is the first time I'm seeing the this particular visual. But yeah, so it I guess if anyone from Leahy, before I guess continue, can you guys touch upon where the helipad is now? And the because it looks like from this the visual that this is the this is diagrammed from the new location. Can you talk about where it is now off Kimball Ave and what neighborhoods it flies over now? Because I know the South Bedford neighborhood, we've certainly heard from some of Butters from them as to, you know, the flyover. So just kind of understanding the difference between the two. It does appear that there's a larger area of commercial in the direct path. But, you know, if you take that loop and go further towards South Bedford, it looks like you may be going further into the neighborhood. But I guess I'm I'm not the helipad helicopter pilot, so if you guys could talk a little bit more about that, that'd be great. And then I'm happy to answer after that, Barbara.
Rick, do you want to respond to Kristin's request?
Sure. So Mark has a diagram up there that shows our current the current helipad. So it's pretty much just just above center of the diagram there. You can see the red dot, which is the current helipad next to. You can see the red dot, which is the current helipad next to Kimball Avenue. So again, our, we normally approach Leahy from the north or south along Route 128. And we make a turn around. What's difficult to see is there is an obstruction here on the, on the east side of Kimball Avenue. Those buildings prevent us from making a direct approach into the helipad. So we have to go around those buildings to make our approach. And again, typically, we make it from the top, from the top to the bottom of the diagram there. We landed the helipad and then we depart and return back to Route 128. That's our normal flight path. So you can see the proposed helipad, which is in the center of the diagram there, new helipad location. You can see that the blue flight paths indicate our proposed flight paths for the new location. Is that, is that clear, Madam Chair? Or do you need more explanation to that?
Oops, sorry, I needed to unmute. This, so the red dots is the current flight path and the blue is the proposed flight path, correct?
Correct.
Okay, because it looks like the current path does not go directly over any residential neighborhoods, but the blue one does go over one residential ne, well, it goes over Laurel Hill Lane and parts of Lexington Street. Am I, am I reading that correctly, staff?
I guess I probably need to give a caveat here. The blue drawings that are there are based on an FAA requirement for radius of turn and minimum altitude. It's an 8% grade. This does not represent, we actually fly a much, I'll say a tighter pattern at a higher altitude. This is kind of a worst case scenario based on the FAA's minimum requirements. So to look at this and say that it's like a road in the sky is probably not accurate to say. This is the FAA's worst case scenario of the flight path it would be taken. We always try to avoid, so our pilots would avoid flying to the west of Mall Road and putting a turn back towards 128. I'm not familiar with any of Butters who have had complaints about our aircraft operations, but these are our normal flight paths today.
Okay, I thank you for that because it does seem like it's a much tighter radius where you, in the red to flight path versus the blue, which goes way out over Lexington Street and in across a neighborhood. So you're saying that that is not necessarily how far you would, you would not necessarily go that far west each time, that that's a worst case scenario and most of the time you'd be further over Mall Road?
Yes, typically, we would try to stay to the east of Mall Road. However, the, again, this diagram was based on the FAA's requirement for minimum altitudes and turn radiuses.
Okay, thank you. I understand.
What, you know, really, we're intending to show here is just that as soon as they're leaving, they're basically doing a U-turn to get back onto 128 in order to get back to their, their home base. So, you know, it's hard to visually show that in terms of exactness. But to Rick's point, I think the intent is that they would do it as quickly and as immediately as they, you know, can do it. And this is showing more of a worst case.
Right, thank you. Because really, all I'm trying to avoid is having it go over the Laurel Hill Lane and Lexington Street neighborhoods, which is sort of, if I'm, if I'm reading this map correctly, just sort of the outer part of that blue loop, the furthest west part.
Yeah, no, I think that's right. The other thing that we, Rick, maybe you can speak to is that there, given the antennae, antenna that are located in that great meadow, there's no way that you want to be going in that particular area where the residential neighborhood is because of the height of the antenna that are in that area, so.
Well, that would be significantly further out as well from where this is. This is really, unless staff can correct me if I'm wrong, I think I'm reading that correctly, that that is just Laurel Hill Lane and almost, almost to where the, not quite the way to where.
Oak Street, James Street, Mark Street.
Yeah, it doesn't, I don't know if it's going over Mark Street or not. It's hard to see.
Yeah, it's tricky, Barbara, when you talk about going over something. You have to think about the noise.
You see that new line of highway in the sky? That, that's not very accurate as far as where the helicopter will exactly be. It's a depiction, but not an accuracy.
What, what you just did by just moving in tighter, that's very helpful. Now I can see exactly where Laurel Hill Lane is. It's going a little bit over Lexington Street and I understand this is just the worst case scenario. It does seem like from the red flight path that you showed us that you could make this a lot tighter and you probably will. Okay, thank you. All right, I've taken up probably enough time. Did you have anything else you wanted to present before we turn this over to the board?
Um, I don't believe that we had any new information to present, Madam Chair, no. As I said, we had a productive DCM meeting earlier this week. Couple of items that, you know, we need to get some information on to staff, but.
Okay.
Nothing new.
All right, thank you. Kristen, did you have anything you wanted to add before I turn this over to the board?
Just to clarify, I mean, I think one of the questions that we were still fleshing out and I appreciate the response today is, is that traffic stopping or not stopping? And it sounds like it, the, that traffic will not need to be stopped and that, that needs to, you know, that stopped a lot of questions from there. So we'll, we're just looking for further confirmation on that. I feel like the diagram we just looked at were kind of apples and oranges. We looked at kind of FAA worst case scenario and then the actual flight pattern on Kimball. So I guess I would ask the applicant to, the conversations I feel like I've been having, the diagram would have just shown a little bit, you'd have kind of blue line above, blue line below, where, because the South Bedford Street neighborhood. So I don't know, I, I guess in the conversations, it seems like that the flight path is actually going to be less impactful in the new location to residential. But I'm not finding that this diagram is helpful in saying that. So I just want to work, talk a little bit between this meeting and next meeting, understand that a little bit more, just so we can confirm that. And then the last thing that we, staff needs to, can just continue working with them. The applicant is just from the last site plan and the build out. And if you guys recall, like way back a million years ago, and Ernie, I know you recall, when we did the 2004 building and there was the cancer center in this location and then we did the emergency room. And there's been just kind of plus and minuses and just kind of, just understand at the end of the day where we stand with that site plan. Not an issue, just administratively need to, you know, tidy that up by, before we get to a decision. Overall, I mean, the helipad's great. We're just trying to understand the impacts. I think it's a long time coming to the, to Leahy and just want to answer some of the neighborhood questions about what to expect with that flight path. So I appreciate the conversation. I just feel like other visuals might be helpful. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Kristen. Board members, please raise your virtual hands if you have something you'd like to speak on. I see Bill Gaffney. Please go ahead, Bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I jumped on that because I, I grew up over in that area and currently where I am now, we have helicopters coming overhead from Hanscom. And it's got to be there, if you're going west to east, it's got to be there. It's got to be their landing, but they're coming over periodically. And it's loud and it's not, they're not 350 feet up and they're not, you know, that close and it's loud then. And so my concern is, is really the proximity to the neighborhood. And I don't think I see, I'm looking for the people on here, if you get like the, the hatches that live right up there on Lexington Street before you get to Laurel Hill Lane. And, you know, what I'd like to see, because you have the red line that can kind of straight out and straight off. This comes in, this comes in, it's going to be right over the neighborhoods. And again, you don't have to be over the neighborhood, right? In my experience with having helicopters in a flight path right over my head, is that even the proximity of it, you know, it could be laterally, you know, at a distance, particularly if it's low, that is just a ton of noise. So what I'd like to see is I'm going to place myself somewhere when we, the site visit comes in. So when you put a helicopter, we're going to do two times. What I'd like to see is one from the original site and go out with the original way that it goes out and give me the time when that's going to happen. Then come back in and then come down to, as low as you can go to the, to the proposed one and then come out this flight path and tell me what time that's going to be. And I'm going to stand over where the neighborhoods are to hear that difference. I think that's what we really got to have here is, kind of, we have to test this out because the way it looks and the way it's proposed is not going to be beneficial to that neighborhood and a couple of neighborhoods over there. And then if I think about that, and the way you have to have it is because of the way it's placed right near the emergency room. If you move it over and turn it, right, we're kind of in the line with where the other one is and you're in that parking lot now, the emergency room parking lot. And try to reconfigure that a bit. And then you can kind of go straight out where that red line is, the same way you did the other one. And then you don't have to, you're not even getting close to the neighborhood there. So maybe that's another consideration. But yes, let's, I think a site, a site visit in the neighborhoods when we have both that existing site configuration and the helicopter and the other configuration, I think would be very helpful for the decision here. And then just the other point that I made the last time, again, we're crouching on the neighborhood here was the request for Leahy to, to look at the free parking for Burlington residents in the parking garage as we, as we accommodate this. And have they looked at that and, and give some feedback on that? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Bill. I just want to make sure I'm understanding you correctly. Are you, are you suggesting that we have a site visit with an actual live helicopter flying overhead?
That's exactly what I'm suggesting. And they're going to go two routes. They're going to do one for the existing and then one for the new path.
Yeah, I don't know if that's something that can be arranged or not. I guess we would have to ask the Leahy team that. I do think I would like to see Kristen's a more realistic flight plan of what they'll most likely be flying, more like, you know, the new version of this red dot flight plan that we have here. And, and I agree, we want to make sure that we minimize the disturbance to the neighborhoods, obviously. But I also think that we have long been trying to get this helipad onto Leahy property and close to the emergency room for many reasons. And, and I think we need to be cognizant of that need.
Yeah, yeah. I think if we're going to do, if we're going to do a new red line for the, for the, over where the blue line is, I think what we need to do at the same time then is to make a new blue line for the existing one. So what, what does the FAA say that we have to do for the existing one? And overlay the red one there. And then for the new one, do what they think they're going to do and overlay with the FAA requirements. So we can get an apples to apples there.
Yes.
Again, it's three, if you're 350 feet off the ground and you're even close over near the neighborhoods, that, it's loud. And I can tell you that if, you know, if you had the folks like the hatches here, the Sweeneys here, that got impacted by the Lexington Street activity we did before, if they're familiar with them, surprised they're not here, we probably want to invite them to this to show them exactly where this is going to be. Because, you know, I know that they're concerned about their neighborhood over there.
Okay, thank, is that the Sweeneys that live on Laurel Hill Lane?
Yeah, at the end there. And then the hatches that lived on Lexington Street.
Okay, thank you.
They were, they were, I think, very helpful in the, the activity over in the neighborhood before.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Bill. I see Brenda also has her hand up. Brenda?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Agreed. I definitely would like to see a tighter flight pattern. I don't know, would they, you know, would, would Leahy perform a simulation? You know, I, a tighter flight pattern is, is obviously something that's appealing for, for all residents. But, you know, I also think we have to kind of take a step back and say, well, being used for, this is for emergency purposes only. And, you know, if it's, if it's a life or death situation, I'll listen to a helicopter all day long. And I think, I think we kind of have some perspective on this. On the other thing, another, our last meeting, we had asked about restoring the existing site. You know, if we were to approve this, what, what, what would happen to the existing helipad area? You know, would that be turned back into green space? And I haven't heard anything on that. So, you know, I didn't know if folks could comment on what the plan is for that space as well.
Yes, yeah, I can, I can respond to that. We did, we did agree that if you want to, we had no use for the pad afterwards. Seating and looming that space over again after the helipad is relocated wouldn't be a problem. So we turned that back into a grassy area, just like it is now.
Yeah, we just, we don't have any long-term plan for that specific area yet. But if the board, you know, wants to have that, you know, on a, you know, immediate basis, you know, grass and loom to provide some additional green space there, then, you know, we could certainly do that. Can I just speak to a couple of the other comments that were raised? So, you know, I just wanted to remind the board that, you know, the, originally, this was going to basically be in the same location, right? It was going to be on the roof of the, of the building. So I don't think that we're altering what the original intent was, was to bring it closer to the emergency room. I mean, we can certainly look, you know, get you a more direct answer as to the, the flight path. Again, I think this visual was just meant to show you that there's no need or intent for this to be heading into the, you know, main residential area of Burlington. It's to get back out onto the highway, which is their corridor as quickly as possible. But we can certainly, you know, show that better or, you know, try to respond to some of the, you know, questioning that's been here tonight. Bill, as it relates to member Gaffney on the, on the garage, I just wanted to, we did have a chance to chat with Leahy administration on that. So with respect to the parking garage, Leahy is dependent upon that revenue for the, the maintenance and the upkeep of that facility. It's, it's not an inexpensive garage to maintain and keep up. In fact, recently, they put new automated gates in, they're resurfacing, doing all sorts of improvements. But that being said, as I'm sure, you know, you and the other board members are aware of, Leahy does have an extensive community benefits package that it provides to the town. And as part of that, they actually do provide, through the Council on Aging, free parking vouchers for Burlington seniors that allow them to be able to utilize that garage.
Great, so. Thank you. I didn't know that. I'm not quite the senior yet.
I know, yeah.
I wasn't aware of that, but appreciate that. Thank you.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Ernie Covino, you have your hand raised as well?
Yes, a couple of questions. Clarification on the number of times per week the helipad is used on average. Could somebody tell me the number of times per week the helipad is used?
Mac, you, you on?
Yeah, Mike, right now I think we're running around one to one and a half landings per week. We do not really anticipate a significant increase, but to give an honest answer in sense of what do we think the, the most it would be is two to two and a half, perhaps three a week is what we would anticipate at this time.
Okay, and that, and that would be the, the, the most utilization, you're saying? That's not a.
Yeah, I, I've learned over my lifetime that you can't predict everything that happens in healthcare and this year has taught me a lot of lessons.
I guess.
So I am, I'm trying to give an honest answer and tell you that's what we think and what we see going on. And, you know, there's a lot of Level One trauma centers in Boston, more than anywhere in the country. So we do have a lot of partners in this type of care. So we don't anticipate it growing dramatically unless people start driving a whole lot worse.
Okay, so that, that brings to mind another question. So if there's a need for a helicopter to transport a trauma one patient from the north of where we are now, would they actually go past you to go to MGH or Beth Israel or something, or would they have to land at?
As, as the Level One Trauma Center, one of the differences is that they should not fly over us to go to a different trauma center. We do have an agreement that patients coming perhaps from Cape Cod would not necessarily overfly Boston to come to us if we were up on rotation. But we would maybe take cases coming out of Southern New Hampshire, sort of as a trade-off of that, to try and balance the load across the trauma centers.
Okay, so there's some sort of a rotation schedule that they use. So it gets distributed, is kind of, is that kind of what you're saying? Okay.
Yes.
And, and another general question for, for Leahy. There was, when we approved this back in, whenever it was, 2004, was it? Or was it after? Anyways, there's another parking deck that was approved in this general area. Does, this helipad does not interfere with the. this helipad does not interfere with the possibility of that being built, does it?
No, it does not.
Okay.
Yeah, well, Mike, I don't know if you want to, you know, that heli-deck is closer to 128, I'm sorry, the parking deck would be closer to 128.
Right, that's what I thought. Okay.
Exactly, right.
Very good. I'm all set. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ernie. I'm not seeing any other hands raised from board members, so I'm going to see if there are any people in the audience.
I can't forget, you know, Barbara.
Yeah, I'm sure I have my hand up too.
Oh, okay. I didn't see that. Okay, first we'll go to Joe. Joe?
You're muted, Joe. Muted, Joe.
Yep. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so I don't know how to use the hand thing on here, so I just use my own hand. But it was basically, I had exactly what the point that they made was, you know, I think this is the worst case scenario as far as the pattern goes, but it's not like this is a, an airport. I think, you know, we're going to most likely get somewhere between one and three of these a week. And most likely, they're not even going to take that route unless they have to.
Right.
You know, so I, I don't really see the path. I'm comfortable, and that was one of my concerns, was the flight pattern. And I'm very comfortable with the pattern that they've shown us. And, you know, and the assurances that they only take that pattern in, you know, in case, in an event that there is, you know, the wind doesn't allow them to take a more, a tighter pattern, so.
Okay, Mike, would you like to ask a question or make a comment?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to follow up on something. I think member Gaffney brought up last meeting, which I found interesting. He asked, and this, I guess, is a question for staff. If the town had any, like, experts in this field that we could refer to, to peruse the plan, just to, to take a quick look. I feel comfortable, you know, someone who has actually done this a bunch of times, who could just take a quick look and say, yeah, that looks fine, or looks pretty standard. Just want to ask, pose that question to staff, following up on member Gaffney, I believe, from last meeting.
So we, as I mentioned at the last meeting, and we did reach out to the departments and we asked again this week if the departments felt like that they needed additional expertise. That's not to say that if the boards want to also get expertise, that's fine. The departments at the time said that they, they were comfortable with the proposal. But as I said, again, the planning board has peer review powers. And if you feel that there's a reason or something that we certainly want to get another set of eyes on, we can, we can figure that out. But I'd like to know a little bit more specifically about, you know, the aspects of the plan. Other, you know, obviously, we don't do helipads every day, but kind of what are those things of concern to focus on that we'd want to do that?
Okay, thank you. Any other board members that wanted to speak?
Just briefly, Barbara.
Yes, go ahead, Paul.
You know, I never understood, to me, this location for a helipad was, I never understood why this wasn't built when the original building was built. You know, you had helipads all over the place, running people around. You should put the helipad next to the place where the people are going to go, was the emergency room. So this, to me, is, is like, finally, they're putting the helipad where you drop down, take the patient out, and shoot him in the emergency room. The other thing is, is I look at this from an overview, between Leahy Clinic and the mall, that's all space where there's no residents in there or anything. And if you go from the new Leahy, the building they've recently acquired, that between there and Route 95, it's all commercial. That whole area is commercial. And I don't understand why, when a helicopter is coming in, they just don't go over those commercial areas and turn right in and drop down here. I understand if they're coming from further away, they may have to, you know, fly over the clinic and then down around there. But there's, there's lots of area around there where it's commercial and/or there's nothing but woods and vine brook and so forth. But in this case, simple doesn't seem to be a consideration. So I, I think this is a place for it. And they'll work to have the best flight pattern so they won't have to come over the town center, for instance, flying low to get over to this pad. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Paul. I'm going to turn this over to see if there's anyone in the audience in just a moment. I will comment that I live very close to Laurel Hill Lane. So if you stray just a little bit further than that, you're flying directly over my house. But as Brenda said, I really think this is something that is very important for the, for the hospital and therefore for everyone who might ever need the hospital. And that includes most of us, you know, may at some point in our lives need, need the hospital and hopefully not on an emergency basis. But I think that it's really important. We've wanted to move the helipad onto Leahy property for a long time. And seeing as this helicopter may very well be flying over my house, I'm okay with that. It's not going to be that often. And, and as Brenda said, it's, it's an emergency. So I think we can, I personally feel that I can deal with that. But I do want to check and see if there's anyone in the listening audience, neighbors or butters, or anyone that wants to speak on this matter. Please identify yourself. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone. Staff, are you seeing anyone?
Madam Chair, this is Brady. I'm not seeing anyone in the chat or with their hand raised.
Okay, thank you. If that's the case, I know we are going to continue this matter. So for the next meeting, I think we would like to see the more likely pattern, if that makes sense.
Yeah, let us try to get you something that is more helpful in that regard. So again, I think, you know, what we showed tonight was just trying to give you the general sense of how they need to get back out onto that highway corridor as quickly as they can. But we'll try to respond based on what we've heard tonight.
Very good. Okay, I think we are ready to continue this.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to continue this mad planning board meeting of February 18th, 2021.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Npamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Esteho.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport. So moved.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so moving.
You want a motion on D through N?
Yes, please.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to take items D through N together for discussion purposes.
Second. Chair, a second, Mike.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Npamba. Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Esteho.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Okay, I am going to truncate these a little bit, and staff can tell me if I truncate too much. But it's a very long list, so in the interest of time, I'm going to try to be efficient as possible. So items D through N all relate to Six to Blanchard Road. Azure Clean Rooms On Demand Burlington LLC is the applicant. Item D is an application for approval of a special permit, section 4.2.71. Item E is an application for approval of a special permit, section 4.2.7.11. Item F is an application for approval of a special permit, section 4.7.4. Item G is an application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section 4.2.7.4.1. Item H is an application for a special permit pursuant to section 4.2.7.4.2. Item I is an application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section 4.2.7.9. J is an application for a special permit pursuant to 4.2.7.11. K is for a special permit pursuant to 4.3.2.8. L is for a special permit pursuant to 4.4.1.11. M is for approval of a special permit pursuant to 6.1.2.1. And N is for minor engineering change. And all of these items relate to, as I said, Azure Clean Rooms On Demand. So this is a life science use. It is laboratories engaged in research, manufacture, experimental testing activities, including but not limiting to the fields of pharmaceuticals, biomedical technologies, engineering life systems, environmental and biomedical devices, and they are all subject to the regulations of the Board of Health. Staff, have I truncated too much, or are we good to go here?
No, I think you're good. I mean, just quickly, it's to allow the reuse of an existing building to have a series of individual laboratory tenant spaces on site with some an associated improvements in the parking lot and site.
Right, and with any of these life science uses, we rely very heavily on the Board of Health. And it's my understanding that the Board of Health has already worked with this applicant, correct?
The Board of Health, I believe, at their meeting of January 24th, yes, and the Conservation Commission has also closed their hearing. And Christina, Christina Hung, I believe, can also speak to the dates when those happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Christina. And please jump in and tell us where we stand with this.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Good evening. Thanks, Kristen. For the record, Christine Hung, attorney at Reemer Bronstein, and attorney for the applicant Azure Clean Rooms On Demand Burlington LLC. With me tonight, I have Christine Crisere and Ravi Samaviden from Azure. Frank DePietro, our site civil engineer from the BSC Group, and Alex Strasser from Clean Space, who is their general contractor. Just by way of background and history, we opened up in early January. And just to describe, Azure is a national life science consulting and project management company that supports early phase, small-scale manufacturers through its program of clean room on demand, which leases clean room to their clients. And Azure provides them technical support so that clients can focus on the science while Azure focuses on compliance. They are excited to be expanding their operations into Burlington. When we were last here, Christine Crisere walked the board through the floor plan and described in detail their operations. And Frank did a presentation on the site plan modifications. Since that time, we received unanimous approval from the Board of Health. We had met with the Board of Health through the DCM, we had a subcommittee, and also two Board of Health hearings. And we talked through all of the concerns that they had. And so the board feels comfortable and they unanimously approved the decision. Similarly, with the Conservation Commission, we met and they voted unanimously as well last Thursday night. So we're back before you and happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Christine. Kristen, did you want to add anything to that?
Not much. I will say just a couple of things that we have had conversations about in terms of the, the site itself. The Conservation Commission requested sloped granite curbing along the west, western edge of the drive. And so we just modified that slightly behind the drainage structures. We recommend vertical granite, just for long-term function of those structures. Also, the site, for site distance reasons, to trim the shrubs along the front of the drive at Blanchard Road, they were a little overgrown. To make sure we have optimal site distance on the curve. To add, you know, a bike facility, also to explore the bike path connection in, to Oracle is near here, just to, you know, potentially explore connection in the future. With this not being a full site plan, you know, we're, you know, between shall or should some of these items. But, but overall, we've had a lot of conversation with the Board of Health and Conservation throughout this process. They've come to DCM, I feel like more than once, but maybe it was only once. I just, we've had, we've talked about this so often. I will mention, you'll see in your staff report that there's a whole bunch of special permits, and we do have a site, we have a decision drafted for you. But the one thing that we have continued is the Cogen plant special permit. They've decided that this time to just do a natural gas generator at that site. If you have questions about it, Frank or Christine can certainly answer that. And continue to explore that Cogen plant. We felt like we didn't quite have enough information. They felt like they might not be quite ready, so they've asked to continue that particular special permit. Not do that work at this time. Continue until April 1st, and we'll figure out between now and then if they still want to move forward. But you'll see a motion of continuance after all these motions at the end. And with that, you know, it's been a long discussion. I don't know if you guys tuned into the Board of Health, any of you tuned into the Board of Health meeting on the 24th. But, you know, they've, they've spent a lot of time with this applicant. And I think they've done a great job. Azure is the responsible party. They do. So we've developed it, so it's, this is kind of the umbrella. Azure, as mentioned, you know, handles all the stuff, handles all the things that we kind of look to, to be concerned about is what, there's the slogan that I'm not going to repeat correctly. But, you know, that they, the tenants come in with the science and they deal with everything else and compliance and regulations with us. So we feel comfortable moving forward. We have, we have a decision drafted. And I think the, the other boards in town have done a tremendous job in reviewing this project so far.
Okay, Kristen, I'm going to turn this over to the board in just a moment. But I did want to take a minute to thank our Board of Health, because I know that they put a lot of work in on this. It was an enormous undertaking. And they've been working really, really hard on a lot of things. And so we're very grateful for their expertise. I also want to thank Town Meeting for funding a new position for the Board of Health, because we definitely need that. And we were, I was thrilled to see that go through. That's, that's a side, sidebar, but mostly on this one, I really want to thank the Board of Health, because this is not something that we could proceed with comfortably without their expertise. So, board members, I'm gonna see, I'll just run through the list quickly and see who wants to talk about this. Joe, do you have anything you had, that you would like to ask or any comments you want to make?
Nope, I'm all set.
Okay, Paul Raymond.
No, but Jesus, this makes me want to go back to work. This is, this is going to be a real incubator. I predict there will be stuff coming out, like we're seeing. Burlington is in the business pages, you know, at least once a week for things that are going on here. We just saw the assistance we gave to West Virginia in setting up their things for the, for the COVID injection and so forth. Yeah, but this is going to be a real incubator. They call this cutting-edge stuff, and it's a lot of fun, and I'm glad they're coming in here.
Great, thank you, Paul. Ernie, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, as long as our Board of Health is satisfied, I think I am. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
I had questions, but if, hearing that the Board of Health unanimously passed this, I'm good. Just want to say it's exciting that this company is coming to Burlington, and Robbie and staff were happy to have you. You come very highly recommended from your neighbors in Walpole. So that's all I had, Madam Chair. Thanks.
Thank you. Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nothing further.
Okay, Brenda?
Nothing for me, Madam Chair.
All right, nothing for me either. Let's see if there's anyone in the audience that has a question or would like to make a comment on this. I don't see anything. Staff, are you seeing anything? No? All right. Okay, then I.
Madam Chair, a motion to close the public hearing on this matter?
Second.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Npamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino. Member Esteho.
Yes.
Member Gaffney. Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Welcome to Burlington. This is very exciting, and we'll look forward to giving. This is very exciting and we'll look forward to hearing wonderful stories about the exciting things that you're doing.
We need another motion, Barbara. I'm sorry.
Engineering change and continuance, but
Okay. So eager. All right, where are we?
On page, the top of page 12.
Okay, that's too far. Up of page 12.
There we go. Do you want a motion?
Yes.
Move the request of nines. Or is it still nine or is it eight special permits now?
Ernie, this is Brady. It's nine. It was
It was 10? Okay. Motion to approve the request of nine special permits pursuant to section 4.2.7.1, light manufacturing, processing, seven, section 7.2.7.1.1, research and development, sections 4.2.7.4, laboratories engaged in research, prototype manufacturer, section 4.2.7.4.1, life sciences laboratories engaged in research, prototype manufacturer, section 4.2.7.2, 4.2.7.4.2, life science laboratories engaged in the manufacture of life science technologies. And section 4.2.7.9, hazardous and toxic materials chemical slash chemicals. Section 4.2.7.11, generation or storage of hazardous waste, seven. And section 4.4.1.11, discharges from manmade structures. And section 6.1.2.1, parentheses, four, non-conforming structures and premises of Article, Article 4 and Article 6 of the zoning bylaws of town of Burlington to allow for the reuse of an existing building to house and series of individual laboratory tenant spaces, on-site chemical storage and management facilities, exterior facade enhancements, parking lot and drainage system, systems and associated site improvements for the property located in the high-rise industrial district and partially within the aquifer and water resource districts at 60 Blanchard Road, subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit B attached.
This is Mike. I'll second.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman in Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino. Member Espejo.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
So moved.
Make a motion to approve the request for approval of minor engineering change for property located at 60 Blanchard Road to remove and repair the existing parking lot, install no curbing, re-stripe parking spaces and extend to natural gas lines from Blanchard Road and to further install a concrete pad for natural gas equipment, reconstruct loading docks, install new telecommunications conduits, replace transformer and building facade enhancements as reflected on the red line site plan entitled 60 Blanchard Road Minor Engineering Change, 60 Blanchard Road in Burlington, Massachusetts, preferred by, prepared by BSC Group Inc., dated December 16th, 2020 and revised to January 21st, 2021, consisting of three sheets, subject to the, subject to the following revisions, terms and conditions.
This is Mike. I'll second.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman in Pemba. Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino. Member Espejo. Member Espejo.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay.
Should we continue the Cogen plant?
Yep, jump to page 18.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue to the planning board meeting of April 1st, 2021, as requested by the applicant's attorney in an email dated February 3rd, 2021.
Second.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman in Pemba. Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino. Member Espejo.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
So moved.
Oh, cool. Thank you.
I'm here, member of the board. Thanks to planning staff for all your work and assistance in getting this project approved. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Take care. Stay safe and healthy.
Thank you. Right, Board members, we have, those are applicants for the evening, but we do have some of the matters to run through tonight, starting with minutes. So I'm looking, we're looking to approve minutes for, first, for the week, for the meeting of November 19th, 2020.
I'm sure I make a motion to approve the minutes meeting November 19th, 2020.
Second.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman in Pemba. Member Clerk Raymond. Member Covino. Member Espejo.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the joint meeting minutes from December 3rd, 2020.
Second.
Chairman LaRue. Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman in Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond. Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Espejo. Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
So moved.
Can we hold the approval on the minutes of January 7th until next meeting? I, I didn't have a chance, I had a chance to review them, but it wasn't until just before the meeting and I wanted to talk to staff on a few things.
Any one of them, you know, otherwise we'll hold these until next meeting. Okay?
Again, here, say that again.
I, we'll hold them. Yes. Thank you. Okay. All right. Other matters for discussion, we have some extensions to time that we need to vote on. Kristin, do you want to take these?
Kristin, you're on mute.
Just wants a meeting.
Check how many times we say that in the night.
Just extensions of time. The first is 15 Network Drive, which is the, if you recall, when it was built, it was built as the Palomar Building up on Network Drive, Palomar since moved out. But there, the original building, what they built, they do have a Phase 2 with, for an addition. And they, I mean, I guess the message, the umbrella message here for every single building is all of these are office approvals. They're all looking to reposition. They're, everyone's looking to figure out is office, is lab, is, is everything. So, you know, having, did not go through that story for every single one. Pretty much, we all know where we sit during COVID. And the PDs, they do allow for multi-year extensions. So they are asking for Network Drive allows for a three-year extensions and the district does allow for a five-year extension. If for some reason you guys feel that you would like to have different than three or five years for those, you certainly have the right to say one, two, three, whatever you want to do. Certainly can do that. I did speak with the chair and vice chair today to see if they thought the applicants needed to be here for questions. The, that answer being probably not, but if a question does come up, we can certainly ask the applicant to appear at the next meeting. So again, the first one is 15 Network Drive for the Phase 2 expansion of that office building. Looking for the three-year extension to May 15th of 2024. If you want to vote that and then I'll talk about the next one or I can
Go, take them by one. Can I have a motion, please?
Okay, the planning board hereby grants a three-year extension of time to the Nord Bloom Company for property located at 15 Network Drive to May 15th, 2024, for the special permit authorizing construction Phase 2, a 40,000 square foot plus a modest addition to the existing office building as requested by the applicant's attorney in a letter dated January 25th, 2021.
I'll second that.
Second.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to bring your attention to Member Rappaport, who has her hand up. I don't know if she had something to say or
Thank you, Liz. Brenda, did you have something you wanted to say or a question?
I just have a quick question. So we're just looking at these collectively, 15 Network is a three-year, 25 Network is a three-year, and then the district is a five-year. Is there a reason why we're going for three on the first two and five and the last? Was that like a request from the applicant or?
So it is a request by the applicant. Of these, all of these are in separate plan development. So drive, the development district allows for, to ask for extensions typically under the zoning bylaw extended on a one-year basis. So, but these PDs allow for the request of a network drive three years. The district up to five years. So that's why we're asking for those different sets of time. And as I mentioned, it's, it's up to you guys if you want to grant the number of years you want to grant. I mean, if you grant one year, they just need to come back next year.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to three or five years. I just didn't know if there was a specific reason that we were going with three and then five in the last. Thank you.
Yep, this administrative protocol that was written into the development districts.
Thank you.
Do you want a motion on the next one for three years?
Well, I think we haven't voted on the first one yet, right?
Right, so I will do roll call, Madam Chair. So Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman in Pemba. Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino. Member Espejo. Member Gaffney. Member Rappaport.
Yes.
So moved.
So moved. Thank you.
Take it away, Paul.
That's a three-year, whoops, let me get my thing.
Find what the second one is for the network.
You woke me up. The planning board hereby grants a three-year extension of time for the Nord Bloom Company for property located at 24 Network Drive, May 15th, 2024, for the special permit authorizing the construction of a 270,000 foot square foot office building and structural park and garage with associated service parking and site infrastructure improvements as requested by the applicant's attorney in a letter dated January 25th, 2021.
Second. Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman in Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino. Member Espejo.
Yes.
Member Gaffney. Member Rappaport. So moved.
Okay. And we have two more.
The planning board hereby grants a five-year extension of time for NEEP Investors Holdings LLC applicant for the property located at 136 and 7 New England Executive Park, the district from August 1st, 2019 to August 21st, 2024, to complete the required special permit site enhancements and improvements for Phase 1 and 2 areas A, B, C, as requested by the applicant's attorney in a letter dated January 22, 2021.
Second.
Chairman LaRue. Vice Chairman in Pemba. Member Clerk Raymond. Member Covino. Member Espejo.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, one more, right?
Wrap it up, Ernie?
Want me to do it? Sure. The planning board hereby grants a five-year extension of time to NEEP Investors Holding LLC for property located at 136, 7 and 24 New England Executive Park, the district, from December 2nd, 2019 to December 2nd, 2024, to complete the required special permit site enhancement and improvements for Phase 3 areas A and C as requested by the applicant's attorney in a letter dated January 22nd, 2021. And I have discussion, Madam Chair.
Please discuss.
Did you get a second?
Oh, second.
Yeah.
But go ahead, Ernie.
Sorry, it says to, to grant, we're granting an extension for site enhancements and improvements. Are any of these tied to any of the buildings that have already been constructed, Kristin?
Buildings, no. But if you were, if you remember, Phase 3 included the walk that they, they did the kind of lookout at the waterfall in New England Executive or the district. And then there was a walk to continue around to the back toward the riverfront area.
Yep.
The piece of it is tied to Phase 3. So that's the site enhancement and improvement.
Okay, so until they do Phase 3, they're not responsible to do the rest of the walk, is what you're saying, right?
Walk is included in Phase 3.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Okay, ready for the roll call. So Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman in Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond. Member Covino. Member Espejo.
Yes.
Member Gaffney. Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone. Have one more item on our agenda tonight, and that is to discuss the recommendations of the housing element of the master plan. I think Liz has the, I guess, recommendations or marked up recommendations to get.
So
Yes?
So I prepared a quick PowerPoint, kind of has everything in it. So let me share that with the group.
Thank you.
Come on. And then we want to go into the PowerPoint so you guys see it. This is not the slide that I want. Let's start from the very beginning. And here we go. So this is kind of master plan, basic stuff. What are we doing? We're in the housing element this time. We do have an implementation guide. We're not there yet. We need to finally vote on things. And then once everything's voted on, we can go into implementation. We're talking about housing. This is kind of, we have a lot of data. And so we have the, and a lot of members, newer members, we have the elements section, which I think of as like the appendices. That's the big section with all the data that informs the summary section, which is kind of the easily digestible part that we would give out to the public to kind of say, this is what we're looking to do. So key themes, you know, we talked about those in the past and challenges. We all know what housing challenges we have in town. So the first recommendation, so I, I looked at, I sent out in December and then I just sent it out this week, kind of asking you guys to look through stuff, provide me with any comments you have on the recommendations of this, of the summary section of the housing element. And so I didn't really, for the first one, I don't think anybody had any real comments for the first housing element recommendation. It's, it's pretty self-explanatory. Everybody seemed to be in, I didn't get any negatives. So if anybody has anything to say now, let yourself
Did you get my comments?
I did, I did. The only one I I did. I did. The only one I saw was the one, I only saw one. So just for your recommendation comments, I just saw one at the end. Did you have other ones that I was missing?
So there was one at the end, and then there was one about some of the statistics that we had. Okay.
Yes.
Liz, it might be helpful, since I know you don't have very many slides, to quickly go through the slides and then go back through them with the, because I know you have comments on the next two. And then we can kind of go back.
Sure.
I think a lot of the conversation bleeds together and just the big picture, and then come back and ask questions, I think would be helpful.
So this is the second recommendation of the element. So basically, we had comments from members that, so if you if you looked at the, at the section, you had the kind of the recommendation, and then a paragraph or two below it, kind of expanding upon that a little bit. And there were some members that felt that the the secondary paragraph was a little bit too prescriptive and kind of the idea that we should focus on goals in these, in these paragraphs and not tactics to achieve them. But, you know, kind of tactics belong in the implementation matrix and not kind of, it's kind of misplaced. And then the last recommendation, this is, you know, this is the Pat and Sky recommendation that, you know, is we all would love to have. And so we're going to try to get there. But, you know, we had people saying, you know, this is super lofty. We, you know, it's going to be hard for us to kind of provide housing for everybody. But focusing on seniors might be a better option. And then we had, you know, these concepts are wonderful, but what are we going to do to achieve these goals? And we have some things in the implementation matrix that are kind of guides, but nothing super concrete that we are specifically working on right now that is going to kind of focus on this recommendation, other than the already approved 40B housing units. So that's kind of my.
Okay.
That's kind of what we have. Barbara, is there?
No, I think we should look at the the recommendations. There's really only these three, and we can ask members to weigh in, or those who already commented can explain what they were thinking or something like that. The first one, as you said, I think everyone was, no one really commented on. Does anyone want to say anything about them now? About this one, sorry, H1?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Paul, I did not receive this. So I, I'm not going to comment on it, but I would like the staff to send me a copy, please, a hard copy, so I can read it about these these housing recommendations.
Paul, that's my, that's, that's my, that's my mistake. These are all recommend, this is a long time coming, Paul. These are all recommendations that, there's nothing changed from the master, these are the, what we've had in the master plan for a while. So you've seen these in the past. You, we will make sure that you get a copy of this as well. So I wanted to apologize for that. You are somewhat familiar.
And Paul just.
My shoes is very old. If I read this, if I read this like more than two months ago, you know, I've forgotten ninety percent of it. Really, I haven't, I haven't thought about this for a period of time. And I think this is the most important part of the master plan, so.
I agree with Paul. Paul, I also agree, this is really important, but it, because we're just talking about the recommendations tonight, they're actually really brief, and I could just read these to you. We still can send you the hard copy, of course, afterwards. But the first recommendation, which is the one no one really commented on, is just simply, preserve the quality of housing stock in the traditional family-oriented neighborhoods that provide the largest portion of housing in the community. So that's just sort of a pretty benign statement, I think, preserve the fancy neighborhoods that we already have.
Yeah. Barbara, maybe, this is, Bill, and as I look at this a bit more, that you're not even saying that. If I move the chart and I increase multifamily twenty, multifamily nineteen, nine, and three, and four, if I increase those to, you know, ten, fifteen percent each, I'm still going to be the single-family housing to be the largest.
Yeah.
But if if what you said is to keep kind of the the percentages the same, would we want to be more specific there to to say, to provide the housing of single-family to be greater than sixty-five percent?
Well, I don't think I said anything about retaining the same portions. All I did was just read what it says here, preserve the quality of housing in family-oriented neighborhoods.
I guess my point is, it says the largest portion, and the largest portion can still be sustained.
It's true.
The other one's increasing. So I guess my comment to the board is, so is that what we are looking to do? Are we looking to increase the multifamilies? Or do we want to keep the single-family about the same percentage? If we want to keep it the same percentage versus what's happening now is we're nibbling at the multifamily. And each time, every year goes by, we're getting more multifamily, multifamily, multifamily because of different ways we're going at it. But if you're looking to change the character of the town, that's what you do. If you're, if, you know, with the three hundred units in the in the park, and it'll come back for another three hundred, you're still going to be the majority, but you're changing the character of the town. You keep that, you keep a number there, then that's really a very clear signal on the master plan.
You're right, Bill.
You know, it could be fifty percent and still be the largest, and you completely wax out what everyone wants the town to be.
Thank you, Bill. Sorry about the coughing. Yeah, you're right. Keeping it at a set number would certainly be more definitive and easier to manage. I don't know how the rest of the board members feel about that.
Comment, Madam Chair?
Of course.
If if we put, rather than a percentage in there, can we say something about the areas that are geographically now one family, we'd want to keep those geographically one family? You know, in other words, we don't want to geographically encroach on the the areas that are now one family. But who knows in ten years what's really going to ball out with the mall or Northwest Park, or in whether we want the, we don't want, in other words, what I'm trying to say, I guess, is we don't want somebody, we don't want somebody coming back and saying to us, oh, yeah, so you want to put three hundred, three hundred units of housing in the mall, you want to let them do that. But you said, da, 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 you didn't want to change the percentage of of single-family houses. I think what we're trying to do is preserve the neighborhoods, are we not?
Yeah, Ernie, I think you have a good point, and Bill, you have a good point, too. And and this is where the master plan summary sections, where you kind of can read it alone, but you also have to read it together all at the same time. Whereas the the land use section gets very heavily into preserving the characters of our single neighborhoods, and the transportation section gets into enhancing the street networks in our single-family neighborhoods, so they're more walkable. But but really keeping that, to Bill's point, that character in those areas. We've heard a lot of the, you know, that crossing those boundaries into single-family neighborhoods is not where people want to be diversifying the housing stock tremendously. There was some talk about, you know, in-laws and accessory apartments, maybe two families, but not, not kind of really drastically changing that character in those neighborhoods, but looking at where diversity and diversification of the housing stock can can happen. Whether it, you know, whether it shifts these numbers a little bit. I think the the point's well taken in terms of this, the recommendation in the graph is really looking at where we are now. But I, you have to look at it, to Ernie, your point, geographically, in a numbers way, this way, you know, I don't think any of the master plan is looking to drastically change this graph. This graph may shift a little bit, but taking into account the land use and transportation and other goals, you know, I, we just have to balance them together. So I think they're all good conversations, and I think we can echo those sentiments and how they tie together.
Yeah. I think we're, I think most of us been around long enough that when applicants come in and we say, hey, here's to the master plan, and they say, you know, but look, it is to the master plan. Look at your H1. You're still being, the largest portion is being single-family. So we're, we're in tune with that.
Right.
So and and it's all about, I think, if, I think I saw Sherri Ellis here earlier, it's all about, it's, words matter, right? The definitions matter. In this language here, I go say, is you going to keep the largest portion? And applicants will come to us, say, hey, I am right in with the master plan by keeping the largest portion. You are like fifty-one percent of single-family, you know, and that's the largest portion. See, what are you talking about? And only because I've been around enough with the Board of Appeals and doing ten, you know, over five years here, that that's, I just see it all the time. So, you know, it's, 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 when you have lawyers on the one side that get you on the language, and we don't, now we don't have any lawyers on, except for Joe on our on our board, it's, it's difficult. So you want to get that language straight. To be clear on what we want to, what we, where we want to go.
Okay.
I agree with you, Ernie, a hundred percent. Yeah.
That's the question. Do we want to, we want to preserve the geographical boundaries of our single-family district, even though the multifamily percentage might increase or not? You know, I guess that's what I'm, what the question is. Yeah, I don't know, you know. I can, I can realistically seeing, see the the push to increase the multifamily. I mean, obviously, day after day after day. I mean, if you open it up right now, I'm sure that a good percentage of your developers in town would say, oh, yeah, we need a lot more multifamily housing. So we need to figure out what that balance is going to be for the for the current future, I guess.
Yeah, you know, kind of, we want to be, I know, this is discussions, and this is years ago, we've been talking about, they said Burlington, I think the state said that Burlington is a fringe city, right?
Yeah, way back, Ginny, Ginny Mooney, who got her, got her, got her dander up on that one.
I'm just saying that that's, that's out there, and that was the state level. That's where the state sees the growth. And so whether we're going along with that, and then you increase the multifamily housing, or are we, we saying, you know, we don't really want to be that fringe city that everybody wants us to be. We want to stay that single-family, nice bedroom community. And then that way, it's a signal to the developers that, yeah, we're not currently interested in that. Although, you do see town meeting approving the the individual multifamily housing as you get, and again, that's just being nibbled at. So this is one way that you can put town meeting and say, hey, this is, this is where we, you know, the, we're feeling feedback from the town. We want a standard community versus a fringe city.
Well, I guess the question then is, is do we mind having multifamily over in Northwest Park and in the district and whatever, as long as it doesn't show up on, you know, up on Pathwoods or, you know, you know, I, that's one of the questions, I guess, to be answered. Good question, as an answer, right?
Well, the, something was said about what the developers want. Well, we've known what the developers wanted since Dorothy Road was put in. So we've managed to keep the town a resident. I don't see anything wrong with being a residential town. You know, people supposedly look down their nose at us now. But, you know, we're, we're a residential town, and my interest is in us keeping it. I don't see anything wrong with ever a single-family residential town. Yes, we've, we've, look at the significant number of multifamily units that we have now. And of course, developers want more. So that's why I raised my comment about this housing section, that I think we ought to be very careful about every word, because as Elizabeth Warren said when they were doing some of the contracts, there's a lot of difference between may and shall. And so we want to be sure that we decide what we want, and that this part of the master plan does not transgress on that.
Yeah. Speaking of the devil, like Ms. Ellis commented on the chat room. Must have here, ears have missed been burning.
But she's still on the call. Maybe she wants to talk.
You were just talking about words, Bill Gaffney. This is Sherri. So I was just questioning, you are preserving the quality of the housing or the quantity of the housing? Question of the type of housing. I'm not sure how, my housing, or how you define the quality of housing. I mean.
How do you preserve quality?
I, I, I wasn't, that's not what I was saying. I was saying, I think it's more a question of the type of housing that you're trying to preserve, not necessarily the quality, because that's a very subjective.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Makes a valid point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I do have another question. Yes. Is there? Is there any thought to different type of housing that would be thought about in the future? Cohabitation, anything congregate, kind of different types of housing? How does that come into play?
Um, did we talk about in-law apartments and accessory apartments in this section? Liz, do you remember?
What we.
I can't, I can't speak to the actual text that we're looking at, you know, in general, at our forums and in talking with, you know, Marge McDonald and others. It's, when you get at, Liz, can you go back to the issues slide?
Sure.
So when you get at, yeah, she, the issue and issues, like challenges, yeah. So how to maintain their property and other things like, so Marge was talking about, what if seniors, you know, one senior wants to sell their house, move in with somebody else, and kind of a cohabitation, co-living situation in terms of seniors? That's something that can come up that she would, she recommended that we certainly explore. And then the options for seniors to to either themselves live in an in-law with their families, or an accessory dwelling, or, you know, we have a problem in town with how in-laws really kind of how they end up being two-family homes, but not really, or accessory apartments, but not really. And, you know, we've talked to the building department quite a bit about that, and they, they're looking, actually, Sherri, to your committee, though, to take a look at that. I think you hear some of that from Andy. But really, how do we provide alternatives while maintaining, you know, the character of the community? How do we provide what our residents need? What is it our residents need? We look to provide, solve every challenge. And if we decide not to solve challenges, what does that mean? And I think these are really the question. So Sherri, to your point, this section is not prescribing, we must look at, but it's, we must look at alternatives in order to ensure that our seniors have, our seniors and frankly, anybody, you know, young families coming into town, or young or families that have always thought up in town and want to stay in town. You know, how do we preserve options without changing the dynamic of what we see in our, in the diversity of housing stock right now? You know, we're heavily multifamily, I mean, heavily single-family, and the multifamily we have is like, you know, three hundred-plus units in these giant kind of places. We don't have small, kind of smaller type options in the town center. We're getting some more smaller options. But we really don't have a ton of diversity in terms of of the housing stock. And that was one of the reasons why in Northwest Park, we, you know, really shied against the bigger size projects that that you see, even with the friendly forty B at two hundred and seventy-one units. To provide for smaller scale options and alternatives for for families that don't change the character of the community very much.
Yeah, my, my wife works over it with the friendly forty Bs. That is huge. Even at two seventy, it is monstrous.
It's huge. It's really big. That's why.
Twenty corporate, I believe.
Corporate, thanks.
Yeah, I mean, so if you think about three hundred units and two seventy units, it's just, it's, it's, it's mind-boggling how big those things are. So, yeah, kind of, how can you break that up? You know, I don't think town meeting understands that they're that big either.
Yeah.
You know, three hundred units, you know, what's that?
Well, that's why we told Northwest Park they could only, they had to do it in two buildings, and neither could be more than, how many? Hundred and seventy, I think.
Some max three hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So just kind of following up on what Kristen was saying. So we have the summary sections, and then. So we have the summary sections and then you kind of dive deeper and you have the element sections. So there are, again, sub recommendations which kind of speak to what we've already been discussing a little bit, you know? Improving streets. So when talking about quality versus funding housing stuff, I think quality, you know, establish an improving streetscape. So quality by, you know, what can we as a town do to improve quality, you know, amenities for, for the people who live in town through sidewalks, connection to connectivity, safety, et cetera. And then we have promote improvements to existing single occupancy houses that do not conform to existing zoning standards. And then, you know, enforcing zoning and building codes. So I think that a lot of the things we've brought up are covered, if anybody. So, does that, does that help?
I guess.
I think we're not going to get all the answers tonight.
Do we feel ready to move on to H2?
Yes.
H2?
So it's, it's a record H2, meaning the housing, housing recommendation two.
So Paul, can you see the script or not? Paul?
I see, what I see on my screen right now on BCAT is recommendations. And, and you.
So expand the range of housing options in Burlington to better serve the housing needs of different age groups and living circumstances. People and seniors can find excellent housing in town that is affordable relative to their available income and resources. So that was the second recommendation. And comments from board members are below. Were there more recommendations?
Yes, let me grab them. So there are two sub recommendations that might assist in this discussion. So let me grab those and pop those on the screen for you guys. Actually, let me get this slide. Okay. So. Does this help? So. So again, I think it, it speaks to what Kristi was talking about where we want to definitely preserve single-family neighborhoods, but along edges, kind of feather in some smaller scale multifamily as kind of a buffer and to kind of like bleed it, you know, make it more and more seamless transition. So it's not just a single-family house. And then you have a few, you know, the building 19 site, again, you kind of have like a, kind of a buffer with a few, you know, couple of apartments. So again, like smaller lot sizes and a buy rate inappropriate, just again, those kind of edge zones. And then, you know, again, we always wanted to do mixed-use buildings in small residential areas. You know, downtown, we wanted to do, we wanted to really encourage commercial with housing above. And I think that kind of speaks to what, what this, this recommendation is kind of trying to get to.
Okay, if I can jump in on this, okay. So I was the person who said that I thought we needed to stay focused on goals and not on tactics. And these sub recommendations.
Are too tactical.
Tactics, right, yeah.
I think also, the reason that I had concern about this is when we started talking about different neighborhoods that might be more appropriate for multifamily or for mixed-use or for transition neighborhoods. I, I was concerned that when those conversations occurred, those neighborhoods were not present. And that really bothered me. So again, I, I think we should stay focused in more on the goals and, and leave the tactics for.
For implementation.
But I also think it's really important that when we have those conversations, all of the stakeholders need to be present.
Okay.
Yep. Madam Chair, this is Mike, can I expand on that?
Of course.
So one thought I had when I look at this issue, I look at it more on the goal side, more on a macro level. And think about like, when I got on the planning board back in June of 2019, we had that great town center and housing forum. And one thing I learned in that meeting was, from all the residents and everyone who was there listening, was that housing is a cycle, there's like a life cycle to housing, where it starts with, you know, affordable housing, then it goes to apartments, the first-time home buyers, to middle class, to empty nesters, to senior housing. And I think one of the goals we should have in the master plan is to look at our, our housing lifecycle and try and improve it on the top and bottom end, both on the senior housing so that elders can sell their houses and stay in town and more on the more affordable housing so that Burlington kids or people who want to move to Burlington that are younger or starting their careers have options that, that they can afford. So it seems like we're kind of, kind of middle-heavy. And again, I think that speaks more to the goals I'd love to see in the master plan. Just something to say, to look at our, our whole housing as a cycle and try and improve that cycle and make it more rounded. That's how I look at it.
Interesting, that's interesting way to look at it.
Yeah. Yeah, where were you, where were you six years ago, Mike?
Well, this is Paul again, finally jump in.
Of course.
Well, talking about housing options. I mean, the, at one time, people from Somerville and all of the inner city were moving out here. I mean, there were, you know, they wanted to get out and get some land in a place where you could have a backyard and that kind of thing. And it seems to me now that there's, from what I can see of people I know and so forth, there's some who are older who want a different lifestyle. And there's a certain number of people that are moving back into the city. Because they, you know, they want the convenience and walkout and getting on public transportation and that kind of thing. And I, I don't think that Burlington has a compelling interest in trying to satisfy everybody. I think we should more focus on what we want Burlington to be. And then, you know, if people aren't happy with that, then they go find the type of housing they want. Whether people going west, I see going up to Westford and so forth and, and places like that for the suburban living, which is becoming less available in Burlington because we're getting much more densely developed. And we certainly have led, at least the, the area that we're in, in developing affordable housing for seniors. I mean, we've, we've been over, the state wants, what, 10%? And we've been well over that. And we've, we've put in developers, like the new one down off, what do they call it? The Commercial Way or whatever? We've put in a lot of multiple unit housing to accommodate the people that want, well over the 15% that the state would require of us. And, and, and seeing that we'll accept some, they say, well, shove more into Burlington, you know? And, and unless we make some attempt to keep Burlington a, a single-family town, which I see it as, and we still have downtown phone government, that we ought to be able to do that if we want to and not have people on all sides every time a little piece of land opens up saying, oh, we must make that multiple unit and, and apartments and so forth. And that's my two cents on that, that part of it.
Think one of the things we have to be, be mindful of is that when we say we want or we, we think it should be who, who is, who is the we? We have to make sure that we include. Right, that's what I'm saying. We have to make sure we, we have to make sure we include all those people. Or, or is, at least reach out to them and let them know that there's a decision being made and they should be part of it, is what I'm saying.
Agreed.
Yes.
Strictly who, you know, who, who is included. But I think the, the constant pressure, if you will, to turn Burlington into something that isn't now. And look, I'm, I'm, I'm at a certain stage in my personal life and all of this is not going to make a damn bit of difference to me in 10 more years or five more years. But for what Burlington was when I came here and how it's developed, you know, I've been a part of that as you have, Ernie, and, and the other people that have been around for a long period of time. And, and we've spent a lot of our time resisting that pressure to turn Burlington into Somerville. So they don't have to move out here.
Yes, I'd rather say resisting the pressure, keeping the balance the way it should be is, is, is that would. And, but you're right, there has been, there has been a lot of pressure. No, you're right. And I, I, you know, it's, I don't know, I see more people trying to move into Burlington than trying to move out. So we must be doing something, right? Whatever that might be.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yep, right, right. Now, and that's why, that's, that's really why the housing in the town center components of the master plan are the last two to be, to be voted on because they're, they're quite controversial, so.
Yes, indeed. So I'm not sure how much help this is giving staff on this, but.
I don't know.
Let's look at the next recommendation anyway.
Sure, so for Paul, the last recommendation is to promote housing affordability for those who are part of Burlington's workforce, so that people who work in town can live in town and so that young families are not priced out of the community.
That is a lofty goal.
And it's very lofty.
It's based on economics, it's a very lofty goal.
That, I think it's an, it's an impossible goal. I mean, we, there are some people working in town that there's no way we ever could provide. But I think it's highly unlikely we could provide housing for them, depending on what they're doing. I mean, we have some people that are working in town that are, you know, working for these biomedical companies that absolutely could afford to live in Burlington. And then we have other people that are working in minimum wage jobs. The excellent possibility.
Well, we've made it such a desirable place to live that, I mean, my, I bought my house for $17,000 and it's worth a million now, not a million, but well over half a million.
Sure.
And, and that's, you know, I, I would not have chosen that. But we've made Burlington desirable enough so people want to come here and they're, they're willing to spend that amount of money to locate in Burlington.
Yes, I agree, I think this one is probably not, I mean, you, you look at any city or town and anybody that works there, and even if you think of town employees, you know, a lot of people that work in Boston, they have to live within a certain radius of that. You know, and they, they either do or they don't want to live up there and they just, you can live in different places. So I, I don't know if this is a goal, a recommendation that you actually want to have on there.
I don't think.
I was thinking the same thing, I'm sorry to interrupt, I, I would be in favor of deleting this altogether.
Yeah, although, although in, in some of our affordable projects, and I can't remember which one off the top of my head, there was, the, one of the groups in the lottery process was people who work in town and, you know, to, to make, to try and give them some, some ability to, to live here. But obviously, we, you can't take care of everybody, you can't, like the man said, you can't fleece all the people all the time, I'm sorry.
So, so I just want to interrupt in, in terms of one thing. So the H3 sentence is two very different comments that are in here. It's housing the workforce and that, and housing young families, not priced out of the community. So if you break it down to each, and I guess, based on this discussion and then based on what Mike had mentioned about, you know, the top and bottom end of the cycle, I think H32, I mean, H31 in terms of starter for homes and existing housing stock, smaller stock for people to be able to move in. And then H3, H32 being workforce. And I guess just I'd like to hear a little bit of comment on the two ideas. And because it sounds like we're just focusing on the workforce, but if there's a comment on the, the young families and starter homes, you know, to.
I think it's a lovely. You know? I think it's a lovely goal to try to keep some, you know, our houses, like retain some of those three-bedroom ranches that were built in the 60s that are getting torn down every time we turn a corner. I think it's a wonderful goal to try to save some of those that are perfect homes for young families to move into. So I like that goal. I think, you know, it's also more reasonable because young family does not necessarily mean that they can't afford Burlington. And there's a young family that just moved into a house that was built up to three for me that just sold $1.4 billion, and it's a young family. So I do like the idea of trying to preserve some of those older homes so that families can move in to those small ones that are in gold for $1.4 million that are more reasonably priced. And it is a goal that as long as we don't try to get into tactics here, I think it's a good goal. The tactics make it complicated.
Okay, you're breaking up, say that again?
I think if we try to get into tactics, it gets very complicated very much. But as I told, it's a nice goal.
So it should be a goal that Pat, that gets passed to the implementation phase and then the implementation phase figures out how to work it out if, at all, if they can, right? Is that what, is that where you're going or?
Lots of different ideas with how to, you can't get into the tactics here. I like the goal of H31 personally.
Yeah, sure.
I, I guess, you know, I know that we don't want to get into tactics, but without trying to hear some of the tactics, I guess, later, like I'm just trying to understand. Again, lovely concept, but, you know, I don't think, you know, Clark Raymond would want to sell his house to somebody for $17,000 because, you know what I mean? Like this is, this is, you know, this is, you know, some people's retirements. This is, you know, and, and to say, okay, we're going to pick a neighborhood with small ranches or, you know, homes that were built in X, you know, prior to X time period. You know, they can't knock them down and build them back up.
I don't, anyone was suggesting that. You can't limit what people can do with their own property. There have been discussions in the past about incentives for people to sell their home rather to a, to a family as opposed to a developer. We talked about tax incentives for people. So if there are, are different tactics to achieve this, that none of them are perfect at all, far from it.
We talked about home maintenance and allowing seniors stay in their home and then sell their home, but they haven't fixed the roof and they haven't painted, they haven't. And I mean, it immediately becomes teardown options instead of actually second, another person moving in option. So those type of things where I, I do think that would be a little overscriptive here.
Yeah.
Like right now Burlington has a lot of stock that could be affordable if it's kept up to a certain point. Developing could move in and buy. Is there a way to figure that out? And, you know, without hand, like artificially creating targets or artificially. We had a lot of conversation at the master plan of, you know, my home is my retirement, is my value. You know, I don't want you to handcuff that, but what are there, what are the other things that you can proact to do to help the stock not deteriorate? We don't know all the answers to that, but it's multiple ways to think of this. So if you want this as a goal, you know, then you kind of start, you know, hammering away. How do we get there? What are some options? And that's where those.
I think that we've kind of already started to do implementation on this very issue with the Northwest Park Housing Company and the innovative ways we're trying to make it so that seniors who feel like they don't want to live in a huge house anymore can sell it and still stay in Burlington. I think that's kind of, that provides a starter home for somebody potentially. Because, you know, I would assume that they're not living in huge, most. you know, I would assume that they're not living in huge multimillion dollar houses. But also, you know, it keeps people in town and it helps with that life cycle as a member as Bayhill was talking about. So I think there's one, yes, Ernie, sorry.
No, that's right. Those, those young families are, 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 the people that are looking for the starter homes are bidding against the developer who wants to take that down and put another home up. So I think, I don't know, and thinking about it and thinking about it a lot, unless you get some municipal participation in trying to still give that person who is selling that home the value, give him the value that he's built up and it could be, you know, you're, you're probably just going to be still at the, at the, at the wilds of, of the economy and the economy is definitely driving the prices crazy. So there was, at one time, there was a move afoot to get the Community Preservation Act into place. Larry Cohen was really pushing it. I remember, I think he was one of the people and then it kind of, it kind of stopped. I think it had a lot to do with the, the COVID situation and not being able to really get together in public, but that, that could be a source of funds. But I think it's a very, it's a, it's a, it's a goal. It may be a lofty goal. It might be an achievable goal, but I think that part should be left up to the implementation phase. Trying to provide housing for everybody, that may be too lofty a goal, but, you know.
I, I agree with you, Ernie. So I personally, just looking at this, I, I like H31. I don't like H32. I think it's just an impossible goal. Part of H32 is okay, but it's also something that we already have, basically requiring a portion of new housing to be affordable. We do that anyway.
Right, right. Well, multi-family housing we do, yes.
True, yeah.
And we don't have land big enough to put in huge subdivisions anymore, so we can't say that.
That's all we're going to have.
Yeah, right.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not sure how helpful this is, is for staff. I'm, I'm not really sure if we're getting any.
I think it's, it's given me some ideas of kind of where you're, you, you guys are thinking about this, which I think was really, for me at least, it was, it was really good. I, I think that, you know, Kristin, what do, you know, I, I think that we can kind of expand upon this. I don't want to go too far because we need to, we need to kind of like, we need to get this done.
Yeah, no, I think, I think this has been great. I mean, I feel like the tin man who like sat in the rain for too long and we needed to oil him a little bit to get him even, you know, like I just, that, that's where I feel like this conversation. We needed to have this conversation so we could like, okay, let's go. So this has been helpful in that regard in terms of specifics and like, you know, get, I, I think we continue working that, but it's, it's just been a while since we've, this has been in our, the front of our brain. So I appreciate, I really appreciate the comments and, and it's making me think of, you know, it brings up a lot of other conversations that we've had in the past and, and thinking about this again. So it is very helpful and especially Mike and Brenda, since you haven't been as much a part of the dialogue, it's very helpful to hear from you guys. And I will say the town center forum, town center housing forum that we had in 2019 that Mike, you were talking about, I was so pleased that we had such a large turnout.
It was awesome.
Our normal demographic.
Yeah.
You know, we had our normal demographic and that's totally fantastic and I love it. But, you know, what happens and it's just the, it's town government everywhere, is things skew senior because seniors are the ones showing up. So it was really great to have Brenda, Mike, you, Nick Kreese, Ed Parsons, you know, just a groups of people that in their 30s, 30s and 40s is just kind of coming to Burlington and having families and navigating what this is. So I really appreciated the, the mix of dialogue we had at those meetings and I'm pleased that, you know, we, we can continue that. So I was, I don't know, I just, it, it, nothing was really entirely different. It was just a little bit different perspective as well. I mean, I think the, the recommendations are all kind of, all stayed somewhat the same, I don't think, but it was nice to get that turnout that we got.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So, you know, we're making progress, I think maybe taking baby steps on this.
Progress is progress.
Yeah, okay. So I think that's the last item on our agenda. Did anybody else have any other business they wanted to bring forward? All right. With that, hey, I'd say I'm ready for a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Chairman Maru.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Npemba.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Seho.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Don't move, have a great evening. Oh, sorry, Member Rappaport, I'm sorry.
Yes, it's okay.
Next page, I'm so sorry, Member Rappaport.
Thank you.
Night, everybody.
Have a good night, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.